Any items that we will not be taking public hearing later in the meeting? Do you have any trouble hearing it back? Okay, please do speak up if you're continuing to have trouble hearing from me. All right, so you can speak on any issue that will not be taken public testimony on later in the agenda. Each person has up to four minutes to speak for a total of 20 minutes. It's looking like we have a lot of people standing up. So just really encourage you to be concise and as many people can speak as possible. A couple additional comments based on our council rules that I'd like to make sure everybody is aware of. All remarks should be directed at me, the Presiding Officer, Council President Carlson. You are not to be speaking towards other members of council directly. You are to be speaking towards me. And second, anyone who wishes to provide materials, we just ask that you hand those to the clerk and she will distribute to us instead of approaching council directly. And I'd just like to remind everybody that we really expect you all to be here and be respectful of one another and of council as we will be towards you. And if you are not able to be, then we will have to issue a warning and potentially expel you from the meeting. So please just be here, share your comments, be respectful, and you can continue on. All right. With that, I will go ahead and get started with our in-person sign up today. And again, be going back and forth between those who sign up virtually. And just a reminder that we don't respond to comments during public comment period. First up is Wesleyan, come on up. You have four minutes. Reminder to watch the stoplight here and you also have a timer on the wall.
Thank you, and thanks for giving me back my sunglasses. That really means a lot to me. I left them in the chamber before. Could the person, the presider, hand out these documents from Zen City? It's a company based out of Israel with which Mayor Norton signed a contract to monitor the citizens of Rochester and other American citizens throughout the country. It touches on the issue of integrity. And I might also mention that none of us have been unruly in these chambers. We respect these chambers. So I don't know what the comments were for, but let's take a look at some point at Sullivan versus the New York Times, or rather, New York Times versus Sullivan in terms of public discourse being vigorous and interactive. It doesn't mean that you have to like me, or I have to like you, or our personalities need to click. It's not a feeling thing. But the New York Times versus Sullivan says that public discourse should be rigorous and it should be information-based. So with that in mind, I brought the contract that Mayor Norton signed as mayor of Rochester. It says on the contract, "I think this could be an agenda item for a future meeting." Because some of the capabilities that Zen City offered the mayor, by the way, because this was paid for with tax dollars, my understanding is that all the data which was collected and accrued belonged to the public generally, unless something should be redacted for some Minnesota statute reason. Everything on Facebook, Twitter, city hotline reports, additional sources, and some of the emails that were obtained through data practices requests show that the mayor had a particular interest in the feelings expressed in the community regarding her mask policies or vaccinations or something of that sort. So there's a lot of chatter between law enforcement and Mashan and the mayor. And a great concern that leads me to be concerned that the decisions she made about mask policy were based on politics rather than driven by data, medical-related issues. We've all seen what the CDC has come up with in terms of the mask issues and the efficacious nature of the vaccinations. And now that it's my, what's the date today? Yeah, it's just about the one year anniversary of my father's death. He was vaccinated for, I will find out exactly how many times. And he died the next day after one of the vaccinations he took. He went home and the next morning he collapsed. So I'm just saying from personal experience. So I would like us to talk about Zen City because that was mentioned extensively in the Post Bulletin newspaper that put me above the fold on the front page. As I mentioned before, Mark Spindler Craig, it said according to Mayor Norton, Mark Craig was given permission to, sorry, the mayor was given permission to control what people saw on the internet. And then in the online version of that story, after I called attorney Michael Spindler Craig, he denied it. And then it was also changed in the online version to cut out that critical paragraph. So the paper version, if you talk about the New York Times having been a paper of record, microfiche, I gotta go. 16 seconds? Then I'll just mention in terms of Mayor Norton's outside global, Mayor Michael Bloomberg spent millions of dollars on political campaigns in every city in Minnesota, especially in Rochester, against Republican candidates, hit pieces against Senator Carla Nelson, a woman. And this is also something from outside global, from a P.O. box in Midtown Manhattan.
You're over time.
I'm over time.
Thank you, Mr. Lund.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online who would like to speak? Use the raise hand function or press star nine. All right, it looks like we do have somebody. I have Casey. And Casey, you have, please introduce yourself and you have four minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Casey McGregor. I would like to talk today about Merriam-Webster's dictionary. The word transparent. To be easily detected or seen through, obvious. To see readily understood. To de-characterized by visibility or accessibility of information, especially concerning business practices. At the Capitol, there are lots of public hearings about agency budgets. How many public hearings have there been on developing the DMC budget for 2023? What percent of dollars spent by DMC are public, i.e. taxpayer dollars? If there are millions of tax dollars spent, why doesn't the public get to weigh in? What is the purpose of the View corridor? Has the council had adequate time to review this packet to vote on the 2023 DMC budget? Have the councilmen been able to discuss openly and freely with their voters that elected them? What changes will be coming to Rochester? This packet is over 1,000 pages and just leaves me with confusing elements on the heart of the city Phase Two corridor. I am just wondering, where is the transparency part of the agenda? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All right, moving on to in-person, we have Gail Madison. Come on up, introduce yourself and you have four minutes.
Hi, Gail Madison, happy to be here to speak this evening. Just want to say, piggyback a little bit on the last public speaking session a few weeks ago. Gina came up and spoke. I have never met her or spoken to her outside of these chambers since, for the most part. But I thought it was worth saying that Rochester is a welcoming community, which I feel sure you all would agree. Welcome the stranger. The stranger and more interesting, and the weirder, the better. How our community here in Rochester looks depends on where you stand. For instance, Brooke.
Oh, Council President, please.
Council President. My apologies. The overreaction to the clapping last week struck me as a little off, or the last session. Especially when true outrage would have been expected during Gina's talk. But hey, stranger things have happened. Question. Have any of you personally dealt with anyone who has been subject to sex abuse? Nodding, then a gout or any such thing? I say, I say you better hope you never do. I'm not a therapist, but I have dealt with it over and over and over again with families and parents that have asked me when I talk about the issues of their child and some things that have happened to them. One child sticks in my mind first and foremost. This one young girl I helped, whose mother married at age 14. Had her first child at about age 16 and seven kids by the time she was 25 years old. Not long after the birth of this last child, the father, a Mustang as they were referred to in the military, we're OCS and going to Officer Candidate School, was called home from overseas, having learned that his seven children were abandoned and neglected. By the little girl's second birthday, her parents divorced and the single father of seven courted his children to their grandmothers, thinking he landed them in a safe environment while he served two tours in Vietnam and countless people before then and during got to those children. Instead, all the kids were sexually abused at the hands of others who knew just how to get to vulnerable children. Today, most of them are unable to talk about the horrors they endured. This young girl, by all accounts, was bothered by someone before she was able to utter her first words. During the summers, she was sent across the country to visit her mother, who herself was strung out on prescription drugs like Valium and spent most of her time in bed, unbeknownst to the little girl's father. Mother's little helper, as the Rolling Stones jingle goes. During her teen years, she continued to keep her secret about the sexual abuse during fearing being blamed and shamed. Although a talented athlete, often playing sports with the boys, she found it difficult to understand her emotions towards boys her age, frequently afraid to be alone in a room with them, worst of all with most grown men. Finally, she received help. And this woman, this young girl beat the odds, however, most have not. Most in such circumstances stay stuck in that trauma, become addicts themselves, and worst of all predators. Why I bring this up is the pedophilia, the signs in the library. And Kim Norton is head over these departments, even in law enforcement. I find it amazing that this has not been taken care of. It puts our children and our community at risk. And for the record, that little girl with me, the survivor, beat the odds. When you make your judgments, don't look at people that they're privileged and that you have to dole out their privilege to them. Thank you.
I'm not going to tolerate clapping. I appreciate that that was a powerful story. I need you to be respectful and quiet. All right, thank you. That was a warning, thanks. Moving on to if there's anyone who would like to speak virtually, please use the raise hand function or press star nine. Hearing no one, I have Karen Charo. You have four minutes.
Hello, my name is Karen Sharon and I live in Northwest Rochester. The campaign signs for Mayor Norton say proven leadership and qualities of a good leader are honesty and integrity. However, based upon a recent erroneous comment that was made, I have concerns about that leadership. The comment I'm referring to is the statement from the Post Bulletin of September 19th regarding renewable energy. The mayor said, and I quote, "RPU had done its homework. They had surveyed the community. They found out exactly how much of a rate increase the citizens were willing to put up with in order to have 100% renewable. And what they found was the majority of Rochester citizens want to move into that direction and are willing to have a moderate increase to do so. I was shocked to hear that. I never took an energy survey and I do not consent to any rate increase, especially at a time when everything is more expensive. I found it hard to believe that most of our community was really okay with paying more, so I did some digging. I went to the RPU website and found their board meeting minutes. I found a survey that was conducted in 2019 and what I discovered was that the data had been twisted. The majority of Rochester citizens are willing to have a moderate rate increase. That implies that most of our entire community is on board with this plan and that is not true. What the mayor should have said was a high percentage of the sample size was willing to pay more. According to the survey results, only 1,251 people participated. That ridiculously tiny number cannot be used to represent our entire community and it does not count for any sort of majority among all Rochester citizens. Furthermore, of those surveyed, about 34% said they are not willing to pay more and about 10% said they didn't know. That is a total of 44%. What happens to those people? Do they get forced to pay higher rates? Once again, the tiny sample size of this survey does not represent any sort of majority among our entire community. So does everyone get forced to comply with any new energy agendas? In conclusion, I do not appreciate comments that omit crucial details and are misleading. Only telling part of the facts is still considered lying. What other topics have not been conveyed honestly to us? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone joining virtually who would like to speak? Star nine or raise hand function? Seeing no one, we'll move on to Gina. I am MN. MN.
MN. My name is Gina and I was here a few weeks ago and I had discussed or had spoken about seeing some public symbols in your public library, which I'm assuming is city-owned and managed. And so I took a stroll again and the signs are still there. I haven't contacted the police department yet because it sounds to me like they're well aware of it. You know, I've come to Rochester as a visitor and I am really shocked at what I'm seeing in this council, the city council, because you're supposed to be serving your community. And I feel like these things, and when I hear a woman speak about a sample size of 1,000 people in a community the size of 121,000 people, that's less than 1% that was surveyed? That's not right. And who were they? Where were they located? Were they men, were they women? What age group was it? What was their financial bracket? I mean, all of these things need to be taken into consideration, especially when you're looking at statistical data. And anybody who's gone to college, which I'm guessing all of you have, have taken statistics because it's likely a requirement, you would know that. Now, what I'm seeing here in Rochester is pure corruption. Pure corruption. And I'm not sure where it's starting and I'm not sure why it's happening. Well, I guess I have my own assumptions about why. And I may pursue this, I don't know how long. I have been extended down here for another month, so I will be down here. And I will be looking in. The other thing that I did want to address to you is that I was down here last January and I took a stroll again and I went to the Rochester Art Center. And in that art center, and I just want to point out that this is a prime example of child grooming, is went into the art center, they had a drag gown display. And trust me, they were beautiful gowns. But when I see a table encouraging children on the top level, the third floor, you have to go all through the whole display of this drag stuff. And this is not stuff that is for the eyes of a child, okay? And anybody that is going to expose children and young children to something like that, is there's something messed up there. There's something wrong there. I don't know, I don't understand how you can understand that. But what business does a grown man dressed up as a woman have reading to your child? Okay, these are the kinds of things that I have been discovering here in Rochester. Okay, and when they had a display table where the small children can go and origami a butterfly, which is also another symbol that is used for child grooming. And I already told you that I worked with children in law enforcement. I went and did studies at the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. I am aware of these things and you guys really should be too. And you should take the bull by the horns on this because your city does not want to be known as a child grooming city, do you? Ask yourself that question. You will all be responsible because you guys have been placed in a position of power. Take it seriously if you're going to protect your children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone joining virtually who would like to speak? Thank you. Use the raise hand function or press star nine. Hearing no one, David Morrell.
Good evening, thank you. Again, I'm David Morrell. I live at 140 14th Street Northeast, here to talk about Silver Lake. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Silver Lake and all the residents that use and enjoy the lake. Right now, we're in a critical stage on Silver Lake. The master plan is in the process as well as historic preservation reviewing the landmark status of the lake. At the Historic Preservation Committee meeting of a week ago, through the public hearing process, the landmark status was tabled. Concerns about the lake and just what is the historic aspects of the lake. Many of the residents that testified at the hearing believe that the footprint of the lake, the shape of Silver Lake that was created back in 1930s is significant and a defining factor in the park. This is also shared by the consultant that provided their historical report. Their statement is Silver Lake, again, Silver Lake, the water body, is a prominent feature and a character defining to the park. We're also, we, the Friends, are concerned about having the Silver Lake Master Plan now in front of the park board scheduled for tomorrow at the same time that the Soldiers Field Master Plan is being considered. It seems like having those two at the same time could detract. Kind of is it difficult to understand both of them? I know they're, at least the Soldiers Field has been controversial in that this could lead to the adoption of a plan that's incomplete and isn't sufficiently discussed. So the Friends believe it's time, the leaders take the time that's needed to review and revise the Silver Lake Master Plan. We'd like them to allow for some face-to-face discussions about the future of the lake and the future of the park. We know these issues have been before you. I know that the council has reviewed an earlier version of the master plan. And again, we request that there be some time taken to review those. Again, the Friends will continue to follow both the master plan and the landmark status and express our views. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues on council, we have two and a half minutes left and we have three speakers.
Move to suspend the rules.
All right, you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Is there a motion?
I move to suspend the rule so that we can allow all of our...
We've suspended the rules now, you can just move for adding...
The, did you count how many speakers were?
Three.
Three written down, but we don't know if there's any virtually.
Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay. The speakers that come forward from here on out, three speakers on the paper and any that do show up virtually.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion?
I'm going to move to amend the motion to add 12 minutes to our time for open comment.
Including the two and a half?
No.
Okay. All right?
A second, Beth.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion as amended for the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Abstain.
All in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Abstain.
All right, motion carries. So we have Jason Tepper, come on up. And you have the full four minutes.
Okay.
Keep an eye on the timer.
All right, thanks for having me again. I would just like to get rid of the whole COVID thing because I've beat the hell out of that. So it's also a commemoration of my dad's vaccine injury in October that eventually killed him in February. It's four months, October 13th, February 13th. So I guess I'm just going to piggyback on the symbolism of the pedophiles. I'm privy to that, I have been for quite some time now. I know about that. I'm sure some of you know about that as well. The ones that I would think in particular would be three of the members of the council that are familiar with the Owl program, capital O, capital W, capital L. That's a grooming symbol itself, the owl, along with like the butterfly and the circle and all of that stuff. And the Eye of Horus that nobody's mentioned on one of the pedophile symbols, the little boy pedophile symbol at the library also has an Eye of Horus, which has occult meaning to it as well, and that kind of ties in with the owl. Owl program at the Universalist Unitarian Church has to do with teaching sexuality kids K through, you know, high school, whatever. I have one of each, or I have three kids, two in high school, one in elementary school that actually had to pull out of school because they continued the lie of the mask at a private school. 167 peer-reviewed studies prove they don't work, including Tony Fauci and two of his colleagues. Most people that died from the Spanish flu died from bacterial pneumonia caused by wearing masks for a prolonged period of time. So I'm just, you know, I would take them off if I were you. The other thing is, this whole thing about you guys being responsible, okay, and transparency and things like that, right? We had two years, we have two years of pent-up frustration that we are not allowed to share and have a robust conversation with our city council for. And because of that is why we are up here with so many wonderful things to talk about. And I have just a pile of things to talk about. According to our mayor, Kim Norton, heard an email she sent me yesterday, or the other day, this weekend. I'm a conspiracy theorist. However, I was able to share all this data with her for the last two years, but because they like to stifle the conservative voice, which I also find I was part of the AFL-CIO game plan to stifle and to suppress the conservative voice. I'm sure Kim still gets those emails. So I'm really concerned because Rochester is headed in the wrong direction. I've mentioned my dad, I hate to mention my dad all the time, but the thing was, he was a community, he served the community for free, mind you. He took no money and you guys give yourself a double, you double your raise, okay? That's unconstitutional, you guys, you can't do that. First of all, you have to have our input. You guys, we're your bosses, right? And a lot of people did not want you to do that and they voiced their opinion about that, but you still did it against your constituency's wishes. There's so many things I can talk about, I'll just wait till next time to do it.
All right, moving on, we have Sfar Vingi. Vingi, yes.
Mayor, council, president, CEO. I'm here to talk today about the Phase Two, the Heart of the City Phase Two project specifically. There's two projects, one connecting with, I believe, the veterans, I forget what the actual description of it is, but discovering a walk and then also the rear front remaining parcel. I'm specifically talking about the connection that is going to be running between basically the Mayo Clinic, you know, all the way through the Alcemic Center. That is potentially going to go through the mall, which I've had discussions with several of the other mall tenants and had some discussion today with the private owner through the representative. They had no additional information to give me and I certainly think there should be a study program for more transparency and public input in regards to this, the Phase Two and the approval of this within the capital improvement plan prior to approving this. So I'm here today to just voice my concern that it's difficult to get specifics in regards to what specifically Phase Two is, how they're going to purchase or how they're going to acquire the space to, through the mall. I'm not able to certainly get very much information from anyone I've spoken to with either DMC. I've had very limited discussions with them in regards to that. But I know this is something that's preliminary, but I'm encouraging you to postpone it or to table it so there can be a study and more public input specifically with the property owners and the tenants to try to make sure that it's in the best interest of our downtown. I certainly, if I could know what it's about and know how it's going to be planned and how it's going to be structured, that's usually the first step before you get something approved. So I appreciate your time today and I ask that you table this specific part until it's defined more properly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then we have Julie Reed.
Hi, my name is Julie Reed, and I just have a couple of questions. Brooke, if you would please pass it on to Norton as we're supposed to address you, and I do that with respect. It would be nice if we could get some eye contact, but I guess that's, you know, foregone. My name is Julie, and I'm here to ask a couple of questions for you to ask of Kim Norton. Why? Why such disdain for patriots? She undermines any event that does not fit her agenda, but yet she calls herself bipartisan? She will not even look at any of us. So far, my observation tonight, Norton has made zero eye contact with any speaker. Norton does not acknowledge the hard-working middle class in Rochester unless they are doing her bidding. Norton has champagne taste on a pure budget, and she is taxing us to death. You all get a raise, we get the shaft. When? When does Norton plan, if ever, to listen to what the residents of Rochester really want and not just the Mayo elite? Has she ever tried walking with a disability, a cane, a walker, pushing a wheelchair, or a mere limp in that disastrous renovation that she is so proud of downtown? It's impossible. Rochester used to be a community. There is no longer that feeling anymore. Norton's majority rule that she has done all these polls and the majority want, that's not true. Not what is actually what's best for Rochester, that only reflects the elite. Norton's smirking, lack of eye contact, and the flat-out disdain she portrays towards the residents of Rochester is so becoming, unbecoming of any elected officials. So in closing, ask Norton why she only cares about her image, and when and where Norton lost all her integrity and her ability to lead. Why does Norton hate certain residents of Rochester? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for being calm and respectful. We can all be here and share perspectives and disagree, and that's fine. We're here to listen, but I really appreciate you being kind and thoughtful about not continuing to clap. So with that, we will officially call the meeting to order, and Clerk Geisler, please call the roll.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
All right, thank you. And I will turn it over to our administrator, Allison Zolms.
President Carlson, point of clarification, I think it's important to clarify Rochester's city of government. I feel there's some misinformation being presented, so is it okay?
No.
We can't do point of clarification?
If, we'd like to suspend the rules, you can make a motion to suspend the rules.
I would like to suspend the rules for just a moment, please.
Is there a second? Hearing none, you're welcome to bring up your concerns during other business. Go ahead, Administrator Zolms.
Thank you, Council President, councilmembers, Mayor Norton, members of the public. I just have a couple of notes today, in, out of respect for the many public hearings that were agendized for today, just pointing out our customer service principles of respect, integrity, safety, and excellence, and I want to thank our teammates at Rochester Public Utilities, the next slide. They are actually, six of them in Florida, in Kissimmee, responding as part of mutual aid. We are part of a mutual aid compact with other public utilities, and they are assisting getting power backup in that community in Florida, as we would potentially need to request mutual aid if we ever had some catastrophic event in the future. So just wishing them well, wishing them safety and good luck as they help our neighbors in Florida recover from Hurricane Ian. Also, it is National Public Power Week, so for those teammates who are still with us here in Rochester, making sure we have great service this week, October 2nd through the 8th is National Public Power Week, and the RPU team is hosting line workers at Spark at the mall. So on October 7th at 10:00 a.m., they will be there with their bucket truck, for those who are interested. Tomorrow, they're presenting at the Kiwanis Sunrisers, and throughout October, anyone who visits RPU, they'll get a goodie bag at RPU, just a way for our teammates there to celebrate their good work and celebrate the community. And then the next week, October 9th through 15th, is Fire Prevention Week, so there will be open houses at all five fire stations on October 11th and 12th from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. and on October 15th from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. So if you wanted to stop by your local fire station, we will have teammates from fire there welcoming you to visit them. So that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Mayor Norton.
Terrific. I have just a couple highlights from the last week, and I would just say fall is, and I'm sure you're all feeling it too, is a very busy time in the city and throughout the community. Last time, I told you that Chal Matella and I were going to the U.S. Department of Labor to speak, and if anyone's interested, they do have that presentation online. I think we were very well received. Chal did a marvelous job doing two back-to-back breakout sessions, talking about the work we're doing here in the city of Rochester, and I heard nothing but positive things. So I just wanted to let you know that. We Bike Rochester is, did an event, which I managed to pretty much stay on my bike the whole time, and we are participating in Move with the Mayor until October 15th, and that was one activity that I did with the community as well as some activities at 125 Live. So I gave you all, again, one more chance to put those minutes down, to hand out the little square in front of you, and you can go back to September 1st, but we're taking minutes for the city of Rochester until October 15th. We're in sixth place and doing very well, maybe leading the Move with the Mayor cities, so that's fun. Thank you for those who are participating. There's a lot of community involvement in that, and it's been a little competition, friendly competition going on. The plumbers and pipe fitters, I thought I would mention the Heat's On activity. I went to that this weekend, and the plumbers and pipe fitters from Local Six do a program every year that I think it's worth highlighting. They take cap referrals, and they went to 11 homes of disabled individuals or seniors, low-income seniors, and for free, they get their time on the weekends. So it's the apprentices as well as employees, and they go out in pairs and they repair furnaces, clean furnaces, and in one instance, a couple of years ago, actually replaced a whole system for someone who had unsafe conditions, and so it's just really a nice service that happens. So there were 11 homes in Rochester, their home state county, that were done this year. Also, Senator Senjum had Dr. Vedder from Germany in town again, and we were able to meet and talk with him, and he's the professor that supervised the intern that we had for the last six months, so it was nice to have a chat with him. And there was also, there have just been a myriad of events that have been happening, and so I've seen many of you at those. So thank you all for joining me and the community. I know, really appreciate seeing us. And I am going to read one proclamation that is in honor of something that our administrator just talked about, which is our public power employees. So on their behalf, I'd like to read this, and I think it actually addresses some of the comments we heard earlier about the direction that RPU is going. Whereas we, the citizens of Rochester, Minnesota, place a high value on local choice for community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, not-for-profit electric company, and as customers and owners of our electric utility, have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas Rochester Public Utilities provides our homes, businesses, schools, social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and safe electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service for not-for-profit rates. And whereas Rochester Public Utilities is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, community, customer service, environmental protections, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas Rochester Public Utilities has also taken on additional stewardship efforts for our community's greenhouse gas reduction goals in planning for a 100% net renewable energy by 2030. And whereas Rochester Public Utilities is a trusted partner whose local operation provides many consumer protections, continues to make our community a better place to live and work, and contributes to protecting the global environment. And whereas Rochester Public Utilities will continue to work to bring affordable, safe, reliable, and sustainable energy to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1894, the year when the utility was created to serve the citizens of Rochester. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kim Norton, Mayor of the City of Rochester, do hereby declare October 2nd through 8th, 2022, as National Public Power Week. And we recognize the people behind public power at Rochester Public Utilities for their contributions to the community and to educating customer owners, policymakers, and employees of the benefits of public power. And be it further resolved that our community join hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in the celebration of public power, which puts our residents, businesses, and the community before profits. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the City of Rochester to be affixed this third day of October 2022. And I would also just note, our public power utility serves this community and has, as we've pointed out for many, many years proudly, we do have a representative, Councilmember Keen serves on that board on your behalf, and there is a community board that actually has quite a bit of authority in making the decisions along with this council over time. And so this reflects the good work that they have all done and the due diligence which they've done on our behalf. So I want to thank Patrick too for his part in making certain that we have a wonderful public utility that we can be proud of here in Rochester. So I want to honor the RPU employees in this National Public Power Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, moving on to the order of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda I've not been made aware of? All right, with that, I'd invite a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay? All right, motion carries. Similarly, I've not been informed of any items being pulled from the consent agenda. Anything I missed? All right, hearing none, I'd invite a motion to approve and block items F1 through 16.
So moved.
Second, Richard.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I just want to say that I vote nay on F12.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor of, favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Councilmember Kirkpatrick, nay on F12. All right. Moving on to our public hearings, and we have 10, so we are going to use our time judiciously, but I always take a moment to go over the process by which we do these because it is a very specific approach, so bear with me as we sort of muddle along on each of these really important topics. So first of all, we invite staff to provide a brief introduction and then turn it over to the applicant or representative of the applicant who has up to 10 minutes to speak. I then open the public hearing, invite those who would like to speak to make a comment for up to five minutes, again, with the encouragement to be concise, so we're not repeating comments and make sure everybody has a chance to speak. Then I'll close the public hearing. The applicant has a chance to provide a rebuttal for up to five minutes, any responses to what has come up during public comment, before we invite councilmembers, my colleagues, to ask any questions of the applicant or staff, invite a motion, discussion, and vote. So we will start with item G1, and that is the residential parking permit termination of Zone 4. And I believe I have Sam Buzina on. Are you virtual?
Yes, I'm virtual.
Hi, Sam, go ahead.
Thank you and good evening. Sam Buzina with the Public Works Department. This first public hearing, considering the termination of residential permit parking Zone 4 is in southeast Rochester near Mayo High School. This zone was established back in 1995, and back then, students had to pay for a permit to park in the parking lot. We're now in the third school year that students have not had to pay to park in the lot, so they no longer have an incentive to park on our neighborhood streets. Three times in the last five years, blocks within this zone have petitioned to remove the permit parking restrictions from their street, and we actually have another petition from a block in this zone ready to go, but we wanted to see how this goes tonight. So we believe that this entire zone is not necessary anymore, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so I will, we don't have an applicant in this case, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I do have a couple people signed up. Is it Linda Lee? You wanted to speak on item G1, correct? Okay. You have five minutes, and the timer will be in use.
Well, make this short and sweet like I am. I'll try. Excuse me for being nervous. I haven't been before the city council in about three decades, so obviously I live in Zone 4, on the corner of 10th Avenue and 15th Street Southeast, so I'm very close to Mayo High School. Now, I know this, the residential parking permit was put into place many years ago to, as I understand it, alleviate the glut of parking from the students bleeding over into the neighborhood. I did not live there at that time, but I have been living in this neighborhood now for almost 16 years, and I have been paying the residential parking permit fee for different vehicles, which has gone up at least three times from $5 to $25 last I knew over these I agree with the permits in the sense that I think if they're lifted, you know, we're going to have the same problem we had before, and maybe even more so because the population of the high school is greater than it was 20, 30 years ago. I'm concerned about the traffic increase around children, around a lot of elderly people who live in the neighborhood, people out taking walks, people riding their bicycles. I'm concerned about the danger of it, I'm concerned about the noise, a couple, two, three times a day, like you say, with the traffic increase. I'm concerned about a lot of the behaviors maybe that will go on, and it seems like, you know, there's a trash problem sometimes too when we have more traffic and people going through there. And I think if the parking permits are lifted, we're going to have that same problem, maybe to an exponential degree all these years later. However, on the other side of the coin, as a resident, I don't feel it's fair at all for us to be having to pay on the street, you know, for parking on the street where we live. I mean, if I have to park right in front of my house, or why should I, I paid, I already paid taxes, I live there. So quite simply, my suggestion is this, and it's probably something you've all thought of already, is to keep us from having that glut of traffic and parking and everything that goes with it, to keep that from, you know, coming back upon the neighborhood again. But yet, to be fair to the residents, I would suggest keeping permits in place, providing the same proofs of residency, the vehicle information that we have been providing all along, but drop the fee. We'll keep the streets from being glutted, but it will also be fair to the residents as far as that, you know, expense goes. And that's simply what I wanted to say today.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have another person signed up, Alan Dominick. And you have five minutes as well.
Thank you. I'm here in support, full support of dropping all residential parking in Zone 4. I live on 9th Avenue Southeast for the last 11 years, and I have daughters at Mayo High School, and I just don't see the reason to have this at all anymore if they're not paying for parking. So I am in full support of dropping the parking restrictions, the residential parking in Zone 4. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If you're joining virtually, please use the raise hand function or press star nine. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and invite my colleagues to ask any questions of staff. Go ahead, Councilmember Keen.
I'd like staff just to respond to the concerns of a glut of new parking in the neighborhood.
Mr. Buzina, did you hear that?
Yeah, I caught most of it. My internet was cutting out just a little bit, but yeah, that's kind of the, I think that's part of the risk we're taking, is we, obviously, we don't have a problem right now because we have the program, and the program does work. I really don't think students will be going into the neighborhood, though we, there's really no incentive for them to do that. I did call, I called the high school last week and talked with them about, you know, what the process is like for signing up for a permit, and it's very easy, you just fill out a form, provide your, you know, the description of your vehicle in case there's any issues with it, they know how to contact you, but other than that, you just park in the lot. There's no waiting list. Anybody that wants to park there just fills out the form and they can park there. So there's just really no incentive for them to be out in the neighborhoods.
Just a follow-up, it's the fall, and there are a lot of juniors and seniors with drivers- Just a follow-up, it's the fall and there are a lot of juniors and seniors with driver's license. As we get into the spring, there's a lot more sophomores. Has that been considered as we reduce, we don't have the parking protections in the
I guess I hadn't specifically considered that, but again, when I asked the school about, they really were not concerned about the capacity of their parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that. Mr. Bazina, any other questions? Otherwise, I didn't invite a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Campion, you have the floor.
Yeah, the thing about the parking zones is like, it's not a forever thing, so if it turns out that this does unleash a torrent of new parkers that are obscuring ability to park, I think we could be back here and talking about a much smaller zone, probably. Additionally, like, I'll just put in context, historically I've argued very vociferously for these fees, they kind of ensure that the people using them are kind of making that trade-off discussion about like, taking up that piece of public land that's in front of your house, and I feel the same way about that parking spot in front of my house. Fortunately, for being on the council for a long time, I'm hit over the head constantly with the fact that it's not mine, even though I feel like that street's mine, you know, it's the city's. So it is important, we kind of put that in context, you know, if there is some overflow parking, it would be good frankly to have some of this asphalt get used more regularly, but I think at this point, we've done some of the studying that kind of justifies this, and I think if we move forward, what would come back would potentially be something much, much smaller, probably a better option.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, as a public comment, you know, we had one that was for, one that was against, and that's pretty much how my emails have gone, but talking to a lot of different people that they prefer not to have our parking, and I think that I'd have to agree with that, try and see how it goes, and if we have a problem with it, we can always renew it again, but it's hard to go back to it, but I think that that's an option that we have to take. And if we have other people parking on the street, we'll end up with slower traffic down those streets, and I think that's a good thing for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, again, I've been watching this, I've had kids go through Mayo High School, and I know some of things. I would make one point that I think is slightly different. Mayo High School actually has many fewer students than it did 20 years ago, because they didn't have Century High School. So the numbers at the schools aren't as large, and I have kind of looked around, and there I do worry, especially these close-in streets like 10th Avenue may get some new parking on it, but I don't think it'll be like it was 20 years ago or like it was when we put these in place, so I do want to support these to get, I think there's enough negative feelings about paying for parking in your own street that this is a good direction to go, and as Councilmember Campion says, we're a live body, and if there's going to be changes, that can happen over the years.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, I just want to echo what my colleagues have said. I did receive, I think, three emails from folks in my ward in this Zone 4 parking, that it was mixed, and I appreciate that, I'm thankful that they spoke out and shared their opinions, but we can change this, go down, going down the road. I'm not encouraging anyone to become Gladys Kravitz, but those of you who are older know who Gladys Kravitz is. But hopefully, from Bewitched, the original Bewitched. Keen's laughing. But just monitor this, the school year just started, we've got a full school year ahead just about, and let's go ahead and see how this goes, and we can always bring this back, but I agree, it's probably going to be a much, much smaller area, and let's work together and appreciate our younger drivers, and look out for them, slower streets would be better for all of us with more parking.
Well said, everyone. All right, any final comments, or should we go ahead and vote? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to a similar item, residential permit parking termination of Zone 1, is item G2, and back to you, Mr. Bazina.
Thank you, Sam Bazina, Public Works Department. This public hearing, considering the termination of residential permit parking Zone 1 in northwest Rochester, this is near John Marshall High School, the zone was established in 1988, again, we're in the third school year where students have not had to pay to park in the parking lot, so they no longer have an incentive to park in our neighborhood streets. We've actually not had any petitions from this zone to remove the parking restrictions, but we do regularly get questions about why this zone is still in place, and we've sent multiple petition forms to residents, but we haven't had any return to us yet. I'm not sure why they don't return them from this zone, but we, same thing, we believe this entire zone is not necessary anymore, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we do have a couple people signed up. Isaiah Lassia, I'm sorry, please, Lassia. And you have five minutes.
Thank you so much. I am a resident on 13th Avenue Northwest, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I, I'll just put it this way, I'm a local youth pastor, and something that I've recognized over and over with this permit during the school hours is sometimes students need care, and I don't have the capability to hold their car in my driveway, and on several occasions, either youth leaders that are a part of my leadership team, or students themselves have received tickets in my neighborhood, which is frustrating. And one of the cases I bring forward recently with the shooting threat at Lourdes High School, that was a very rigorous day for students, and I was in direct contact with students that were actually experiencing trauma. And for them to come and have to worry about the darn permit parking on the street, I just don't see it valid, especially with the high school, as the individual said on the screen, of it's not being charged for students to park at John Marshall, so why do we still have that? I also will say I'm one of the individuals that has requested the petition and have not followed through, just with life getting very busy in this fall season, as the mayor had stated, but I do encourage you to think about the termination of the permit parking on 13th Avenue and for the Zone 1. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have another person signed up, Rebecca Drager. You have five minutes when you're ready.
Thank you, so I didn't prepare a speech. I live on 13th Avenue also, I'm not a pastor, but I've lived there 11 years. The school is directly behind my house. We have had a lot of incidences where we have had to call the school, because the police don't like to bother with it, they tell us to call the school. They have one officer at that school. That one officer, for how many kids? And even if you guys have done this 20, 30, I don't even care, 40 years ago, how many more people have come to Rochester and made it home? So when you're saying, we did this this long ago, but there's these extra schools, and mind you, I work with the school system, okay? When you're saying that, please, you need to realize that Rochester has grown in the time that I've lived here immensely. I mean, I could sell a shack right now for $350,000, it's ridiculous. So let's be realistic when we talk about this. I say if, I agree with the other lady, we pay a lot of taxes, they go up every year, why should this cost us to pay in our own neighborhood? Okay? If, if there's some reason that you'll have, I'd love to hear it. Also, those things that you said you passed around for us to vote on, I've lived in the same house for 11 years, never seen one, okay? In speaking with my neighbors, which most are elderly and afraid to come in because of COVID, they all opposed it too. Now, we've had, we've had problems with kids with the garbage, we have asked them, please, just put it in our garbage can, we don't care, just be respectful. We've had a lot of vandalism, and like I said, when we have called the Rochester Police Department, which by the way, is the only one that will respond to us, figure that one out as counsel, because we have the right to call the sheriff and be responded to. They refuse to send them to our homes. My theory is, you're looking for big trouble, and if you want to try something out, try making them get permits if they want to park on the streets. Let's hold somebody accountable here. You have one officer at that school, and that's who we're told to talk to because our police force doesn't want to be bothered with it. So how do we tell them, I mean, we just, they just took the speed sign off of our road. We have little kids all over the place, we have either elderly, or we have little children in almost every house on that street. And same thing, we call because they're speeding down our roads, talk to the school. That's old. That's really old. And if you all lived on one of these streets, and they were racing up and down, leaving garbage, smoking their pot in front of your house, you know what? You'd be irritated too. I myself, I can go either way, but when I talk to my elderly neighbors that are getting more and more fearful of the neighborhood that they've spent most of their lives in, that's where I have a problem. So please, just consider a little more, before you guys vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Come on up and introduce yourself.
This is my first time to ever come speak to you, but thank you for your service.
Can you introduce yourself?
I am Jim Baber, B-A-B-E-R, B not A, V. I own a property, a house on 13th Avenue, and my daughter owns on 14th Street, all in this same zone, and I support the termination of the parking restriction. For various reasons, because your friends come there, they have to worry about getting a ticket, and it's always a concern. I just parked there twice today, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Come on up. Please introduce yourself as you're able, and you have five minutes.
My name is Rose Stephenalder, and I have lived on 13th Avenue for 30 years. John Marshall parking lot is behind me, St. Pius is in front of me. Okay, so I watch the traffic all the time, I have a grandson that is at John Marshall, he parks in my driveway, I park in the street and pay a permit, so that he can park in my driveway, because he needs to get fast out of that parking lot and get to work. He's got to come to my house to change so he can get to work. Okay, so it is 25 minutes to get, if you are the last person in line to get out of that parking lot, it takes 25 minutes. So if you want those kids parked on the street, they're going to come through our property. When I first moved in there, they were all over, and then most of us in that neighborhood, in that block, we did fence in our properties, but even that, there were some jumpers. But there are some houses that are not, and we're going to have, we're going to have these kids running through our property. I do not like paying for the permit, but I will pay for the permit to keep the cars off the street. Okay, one side of the street is not parkable anyway, because it's where the parking lot is, where St. Pius School is, so it's a drop-off for the buses, whatever, they're using right now. It's not a good place for John Marshall kids to park, and they are going to park on the street. And I, I just want a few streets around John Marshall to be permit parking, the rest of them you can do whatever you want with, but there are some that we need to keep those space, that street clear. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Suzie Olson, and I live on 15th Avenue, so straight out of JM, is a thoroughfare that gets going pretty fast, so I love the idea of having no permit parking, so we can get some cars, like one of my cars, so I don't have to guard jockey all the time. We only have one car that we permit park and hope we can figure it out, who's going to be on the street, get that car back on the street, oh, we got to go pick up the grandbaby, oh, you know, so I am in favor of getting rid of that permit parking and take care of some of these people down the road, figure out where those kids are parking, where they're jumping over, and reassess what's going on. My street should possibly be one that would be considered, but you know, if more cars on the street will slow them down, you know, and I think that will help, so, because that's our biggest issue. They're late for school, and they go right past 15th, past Breitman's Photography into the parking lot, and like I said, that will slow them down, so I hope we can go ahead and get rid of that permit parking and then put it in place again as some studies are done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. As a JM grad, this is bringing back lots of memories of...
Rita McCoy and my husband and I have lived on 13th Avenue for 55 years, and I guess we, I, we support this, getting rid of the restriction, because it's kind of embarrassing when your friends stop by and they go out and they get a ticket, so, I mean, I just don't see at the time that it was put in place, it made sense, doesn't make sense anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Make sure everyone has a chance to speak. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing and invite questions of Mr. Bazina. Councilmember Palmer, then Kirkpatrick.
First question is, how much does it cost for the permit? I forgot what that was, and the second thing is, is it good for the whole year, or are we refunding money, or how are we handling that?
Yeah, the rate for 2022 actually went up to $30, and it's good for 12 months or a full year, but in the packet, we did say that we would not be giving refunds for active permits if we terminate the zone today.
It sounds like, Mr. Bazina, it sounds like there are a couple streets that are maybe more of a concern than some of the others. I'm wondering just from a monitoring perspective if there's a way to keep an eye on a couple of the particular streets. Councilmember Campion's laughing at me because I haven't, oh, I'm sorry. I always forget to call on Councilmember Kirkpatrick. Can you answer my question quickly, and then we can turn it over to Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Sorry, what was the question?
Is there a way, is there a way to just keep an eye on what the impact is on a couple particular streets that people express concerns about?
Yeah, I think we definitely can, I can work with Parking Control, at least for a little while, to continue to monitor the area. I can also reach out to St. Pius School and just get a feel for how their pick-up and drop-off works, and see if there's any tweaks we could do to help congestion on 13th Avenue as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. There seems to be more concern with JM than Mayo, and I'm not going to draw any conclusions to that whatsoever, but, but do we know what the student count is, Sam, versus how many parking spaces there are at JM? I know that parking lot is significantly smaller than Mayo's parking lot. So are we inherently asking for trouble if we remove these zones from JM, whereas it's going to be smooth sailing down at Mayo? I don't know.
I guess I didn't, I didn't count the parking spots. Again, I did call this high school last week also, and they, again, did not express any concerns with it, they said maybe, potentially in the winter when there's big piles of snow taking up a bunch of parking spaces, but other than that, there were no concerns.
Councilmember Campion.
So one thing I think we need to differentiate is like, the parking impact from, you know, already illegal activity, like if people are jumping your fence and coming in your yard, that's already illegal. So how we would address that likely is asking the police department... So how we would address that likely is asking the police department to enforce the parking lot for a day or two and it's probably the same people that are doing it on a regular basis. And we have done this in other spots with, um, parents during pickup. Uh, at Gibbs Elementary, we had a similar situation with people stacking in the non-parking zones and stuff like that. But the, the real hard part with these that I understand from a resident's standpoint is the streets around John Marshall are really busy for twenty-five minutes in the morning and twenty-five minutes at night. And like, we block off um, fifteen blocks of parking. And I think when you ask for like the additional reasoning, the hard part to like get across is the property taxes here don't cover the cost of replacing the asphalt. So like, it is a community asset. It is, I've been doing this a really long time. I assure you it doesn't. Um, and so like, we are looking to make sure that the public who is helping to finance that is also getting benefit out of that. I have had a lot of people come and tell me about the visitor problem. The easiest way to solve this is to disband this and then come back more tactically. These grow organically. If we find that there is a need, I, the entire council, I think, would be willing to revisit it, say, this didn't work, let's do a more narrow thing. But I think predetermining that one is necessary. It does not take long to roll these out. If we decide something is necessary, same season, you can have the signs up and have the permits done. It's, it is something where if we get motivated about it, we can make it happen. So I, I just think we don't have to fear something we will be able to fix later.
Is this your preamble to a motion?
I would, I, so this is about our council rules? I don't know when a motion's allowed. So if a motion's allowed now, I'm happy to make it. I would move approval.
Well, Councilmember Dennis had a question. Did you have a question of staff?
I have a problem.
Yes, I do. It kind of piggybacks off of what you said, but what are some of the issues are speeding and drug use and things? That's not, um, you know, parking issues. That's, you know, like what Councilmember Campion was saying. Can staff come and address those on what can be done? I know residents and throughout the city have issues with speeding. What, um, what are the tools that, that residents can use to address those specific problems that do not necessarily connect to parking but are, you know, a citywide problem? Can someone go on record just to say what constituents should do to address speeding and things? Besides just calling the police, because of course the police are overwhelmed. What are the tools in their toolbox? That's my question for staff. Thank you.
I'm not sure that I'm the best person to answer that question. My, my advice would be to, to call the police non-emergency number.
And if you do not get a response, to call your council member. And that's their responsibility. Like, the, I, I'm sorry, if your council member's sitting up here, I, I would hope that you could contact them after the meeting, but the public comment is closed.
So, so I think, um, like obvious, I'm, I'm for getting rid of the permits.
Councilmember Dennis, we need a motion before we talk about our position.
Yeah, so I, I think it's really important for residents to know what they can do. I know there's studies they can sign up for, get petitions signed. So I, I just, on the record, I, I'd like to have it, um, addressed that, you know, these issues are really serious. Speeding, of course, is a safety issue for all residents, small children and, and all ages. Um, and when we, we deal with, um, you know, drug use and jumping over fences, all that, that's all different than what we're talking about with permits. So, um, I just would like some staff, I'm sure there's someone.
Maybe a suggestion would be to have Public Works get back in touch with council and share some thoughts for us to share with constituents as they contact us. But right now, that's not
Well, that's individual.
enough to this
I'm just thinking that
item.
This is an issue that's across the board and is directly for this.
We're dealing about residential parking, so I'm going to redirect the conversation and Councilmember Campion, you had a motion.
Move of approval. Second.
All right, Councilmember Campion?
So I, we've been trying for a really long time to figure out how to sort these things out. And I know it is hard, but the way to sort them out is to set them aside and come back and build better ones if they're needed. Like, there is, um, always going to be chant parking challenges. I'm going to date myself. I went to St. Pius Elementary School across the street. Like, I, I've seen the kids going to high school there. I drove through these streets this afternoon to take a look on the way to Washington School where my child goes. So like, these streets are familiar. It is not an unfamiliar part of the town to me. So I, I think the net is, let's try and like build this more reliable in the future. We have good zones. They're much tighter. They are like driven by demand. That's where I think we should focus our efforts. So I, I think that's the right direction.
Mayor Norton?
So I agree with, um, the discussion that Councilmember Campion just started here, but I, I think, um, we've been working on our partnerships with our school district and our county. And I think it's possible that we could have a discussion with some of our partners, like the school district, about a particular issue. And I would frankly be interested in finding out how many students are at the school and how many drivers there are and how many parking spaces there are. And maybe we could get some of that information to help lead a discussion if in fact, um, this problem continues or gets worse if the change is made here today. So, um, I'm happy to organize some of those conversations if that will help uh, the situation, but I think it's worth trying. Uh, and then we'll move ahead after that.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Palmer?
Well, this isn't my ward in, uh, my area and I'm very familiar with the streets there and, and running and going to St. Pius and understanding John Marshall kids. So if anybody has any problems, they can surely contact me and we can come up with maybe a different idea of how we handle this. We can, uh, there's lots of different ways that we can do this. As far as speeding goes, if we have concerns on speeding, we can, um, ask for a traffic study and/or we can put up the, the speed, uh, trailer to see if that helps for a day or two um, for speeding. And, and it, to cut down on speeding, we've been told, park your car on the street, it will narrow the street and people will drive slower. So if there is a problem around St., St. Pius, the St. or, or John Marshall area, let me know. Call me, email me. Um, you should have my number. Thank you.
Any final discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
No.
Moving on to item G three, the twenty twenty-three community block grant allocations. And we have Brent Svenby here. Welcome. Go ahead and introduce the item when you're ready.
Good evening, President Carlson, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, Brent Svenby, Community Development. Today I'm here to talk about the twenty twenty-three community development block grant allocations. On a side note, the city has not received our twenty twenty-two funding yet from HUD. Should get it within the next thirty to forty-five days probably. So we're working on it.
Before the end of the year?
Uh, we'll, we'll extend to past end of the year in, in most cases, but we'll get it. Yeah, we'll get it sooner than later, so.
I like that optimism.
So back in July, we, um, July thirtieth, we published a notice in the Post Bulletin of Funding Availability um, for twenty twenty-three applications. And we gave, um, a thirty-day window for, um, organizations to submit applications, um, for funding for next year. I also sent out an email to over forty different organizations that have expressed interest or had received funding in the past. I didn't even know that our window for applications was, was open. And I did reach out to roughly five new organizations this year, um, who have expressed interest since last year, so. Um, the application and the notice was also posted on the city's website. And I did hold a, um, open house forum back on August tenth, allowing individuals to come into the open house to ask questions on funding or if they need help to fill out the application. So, and we had six or seven individuals attend that open house with questions regarding application and, and fundings. So we did receive applications this year from two organizations, two organizations that had not received or submitted applications in the past. Moji Women and Project Legacy were two, two new organizations this year that, um, submitted applications. Um, a total of eight applications received. Um, five of the eight were for public service activities and the other three fit under the rehab, um, category. We are projecting in twenty twenty-three that we will receive roughly seven hundred thousand dollars in, um, funding from HUD. And, um, public service activities is limited to fifteen percent of that funding, so we can have up to about a hundred and five thousand dollars that we can, um, put towards public service activities. And then we are estimating that we'll receive about two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars in program income. And that comes from this single-family rehab loan program. So we're estimating that we'll see about two hundred thousand dollars, um, in, in repayments over the next year from that program. So of the five applications we received for public service, um, you can see enlisted, um, before you. Um, we received an application from ABC, Boys and Girls Club, Damascus Way, Moji Women and Project Legacy. Um, in reviewing the applications, it was determined that the application submitted by Moji Women was ineligible for, um, funding as it did not meet one of the, um, seven priorities listed in the city's consolidated plan. I did talk to them about that and I did direct them to, um, a program from Deed um, that may fit them better than the black grant funding as Deed has a program for, uh, training of low-income individuals grants up to two hundred thousand dollars. So, um, they were going to look into that program from Deed. Um, then we received three applications that fit under the rehab, um, program. We, we, one was from First Homes, um, another one from Hiawatha Homes, and then we received one from Two Rivers Habitat for Humanity. Um, they have also, this is the first time they submit an application for funding. And, um, their program would be a Habitat Handyman Repair Program, which would help, um, low-income individuals with home repairs and they're looking at doing twenty-five homes at a thousand dollars each. This is a third year of having a steering committee that, um, reviews and scores applications. Um, again, this process was started in twenty twenty. And currently the steering committee is made up of in, um, internal teammates, um, from the police department, parking rack, library, building safety, um, public works, finance and community development. Uh, we met on September sixteenth to review the applications, review the scoring and the recommended allocations developed by the community development team. As mentioned, this is the third year and we did, um, develop a scoring application checklist. We've added to it every year, so, um, this year a total of seventy-five points was available. And our scoring looks at the timeliness, um, how are they willing to, um, expand the funds in a timely manner? Project effectiveness, I'm looking at, um, is there other matching funds? What type of impact, um, are their clients, um, and social impact? We also looked at how does it meet the priorities of the city? Of, uh, and how does it meet the priorities of, of the consolidated plan? Then we also looked at if, then, been funded in the past. Um, based on that, our recommendation for twenty twenty-three funding is, um, for the public service activities, uh, we are recommending to continue to fund the Warming Center since, um, that is a project that we started funding in twenty nineteen and since that was a new project back then, we can continue to fund that project. So we are recommending, um, forty thousand dollars to the Warming Center. A little over twenty-nine thousand dollars for Project Legacy and then fifteen thousand for Damascus Way and twenty thousand thirty-five for the Boys and Girls Club. That adds up to the hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, other categories would be administrative activities of seventy-nine thousand dollars that goes to our cost to administer the program. And then about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in rehab activities. That's the, the three applications that we, we received for, um, First Homes, Two Rivers and Hiawatha Homes Foundation. And then they're naming about five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars put into a affordable housing bucket and majority of that funding would go towards our single-family rehab program. And then we would put money towards a, like a rental rehab program. We are doing a, a pilot program this year where we, um, sent out requests for owners of fourplexes um, to submit applications for a rehab project. So we are working with our colleagues at the county to, um, hopefully do a project here this year on a four, fourplex that um, needs to be updated. And then the last bucket is a neighborhood infrastructure improvement bucket of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And that, that is made up of, um, putting some money aside for some bike racks in business areas and low moderate incomes. Um, doing some public, um, infrastructure improvements and also, um, continuing with the gap in the sidewalks in low-income, moderate neighborhoods. So all those fundings add up to about nine hundred thousand dollars. Here's a slide, just how does our, um, allocation fit into the affordable living? About almost sixty-five percent of our allocation goes to housing. Little over eight percent goes to transportation, four percent goes to economic development and little over five percent goes to youth programs. Any questions?
I think we will have some questions, but we're going to do the public hearing and then we will call you right back up. Okay, thank you, Mr. Svenby. We will open the public hearing and I have at least one person signed up, Samuel Hawkins. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. Well, I guess my name's on the list, but I am Samuel Hawkins. I'll continue in the tradition. Um, thanks for funding us, the Boys and Girls Club, for the past three years as the steering committee. That funding allowed us to instill different programs, uh, for social emotional programs that instill empathy, relationship reconciliation and emotional literacy within our members at the club. Uh, our Positive Action Program shows our youth how to approach conflict and persevere over the struggles that they will face at some time and the peer, and the peer pressures that they'll face at some time. Um, this year's funding, it will help us to branch out and actually plant roots to serve our youth in more areas around the committee that we, uh, community that we've actually talked about at this committee so far. Um, October twenty twenty-one, uh, we began a partnership with ALC, uh, JM, John Marshall, and during twenty twenty-two, we established relationships with Wright Fit Middle School, STEM Academy and also Rochester Math and Science. Uh, we've done programming during the school year of twenty twenty-three, January to, to May, and we also had programming at STEM Academy and Rochester Math and Science, uh, during our summer program. And as you saw in the slide, we had, um, programs like Positive Action, which teaches the social emotional learning within our youth. Money Matters, which teaches financial literacy, uh, for our members. Career Launch, which helps them take an explorative nature and just find out what type of careers they might enjoy when they grow up. And also Growing Up Black, uh, which was a program favorite among the, the schools we were at, which gives the, the students and members an opportunity uh, just to talk about, um, the, the rea- the realities they're going to face, um, growing up black, uh, in America. And I'm going to read a quick, uh, testimonial from, uh, Erin Vasquez from, uh, John Marshall. She's the community school coordinator there. And this is her testimony of our programming at John Marshall. John Marshall, which is one of Rochester's full-service community schools, is entering another year of partnership with Boys and Girls Club. Our partnership is important to our community of students for many reasons. Including, it's one, helping create space for dialogue around important topics like race and financial literacy. Two, providing opportunities for students to network with community members to increase their cap- capacity for going forward to make connections to future endeavors such, such as job hunting. Three, helping to provide a more diverse staff experience for our students as we are aware that our JM staff does not yet fully reflect the diversity of our student body. And four, to expand access to information and experiences to students that may not always be able to easily access this form of other, um, that other adults or caregivers in their lives can provide. We are thankful for our continued partnership and look forward to continue to build upon it. Uh, I just want to end and say again, thank you for your time and also your consideration in the funding for the past three years. We hope to receive it so we can continue to make an impact on our future because that's what our youth are. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak? And if you're joining virtually, you use the raise hand function or press star nine. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public comment and invite Mr. Svenby back up and Councilmember Keane will start us off.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Hey, I realize the, uh,
Hey, I realize the pressure we get within the public service applications, the constraints there. You explained why the Pomogee, why we couldn't fund that. You didn't talk to ABC, and it looks like we did not fund that. Could you talk to that?
Their funding was more for general programmings, or not programming, but staffing supports. And we just kind of ran out of money.
So it was a criteria problem?
Yep, and they actually, when we scored them, they scored the lowest of the applications. So they were at the very bottom of our application.
Okay. I expected that-
It happens every year to them. You always have those applications that score lower, and then typically we run out of funding before you get done.
Yeah, and with the constraints of the percent of which we can use for public service, I get, my statement here would be, again, I understand that these things are going to happen, but I would also want to make it clear that anyone who's getting funded in this, they might be bounced the year later again. Because when I look at ABC and the services they provide in our community, it's stressful to see them not getting the funding. But I also know that when they were getting the funding, it was more for transportation support, and they probably scored better with those years. And I would want to hopefully make it clear that just because you don't get 2022 applications that you should be back. And I, again, I'd hope our scoring would not have this sort of like, but now I'm getting used to having this funding, that it can be moved around.
Yeah, and actually, ABC is getting funding in 2022 for a van purchase. So I talked to them today, and once we get our 2022 funding, they will be purchasing a van for their services.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bransford, these are questions still.
Yeah, no, Mr. Keen really beat me to the punch there a little bit. But is there any consideration? So you were talking about how these are ranked, and if you go for transportation, it's higher. But it's a community grant. And so I look at it like ABC is one of the top employers in this city, right? So they definitely add a lot to the community. Is that ever a consideration?
No, it's, well, we have to go by a consolidated plan, and there's seven priorities in our consolidated plan. Our number one priority for block grant funding is affordable housing. And then transportation, I think, is number five or six. So it doesn't garner that many points in the scoring category because that priority is a lower priority for the use of our block grant funding.
So does that mean every year ABC scores low because they don't meet one of those two priorities?
That's based on our 2022 to 2024 consolidated plans. So eventually here, we're going to be coming back with a new five-year plan, which is going to take all these priorities. And maybe in that time, they only have five priorities, and it'll be a different priority for our funding. But based on our current five-year plan.
Okay, yeah, just, well, I know it's questions, but you should take a walk through ABC and see if it's just deserted. They need people.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
So one question I had was, is it, are the guidelines self-determined? Or are there federal rules we have to follow in giving out the CDPG funds?
That's federal.
So I just wanted to be clear about that. It's not something we determine. It comes down to us. So that was one point. The other thing I wanted to say is I was a little surprised at the lack of applications, although it's plenty for what you had to give out.
I think they got more this year than we did last year. So we are, we're trying to reach a broader market and trying to get more and more out there, so we're working on it.
I know you are. And so to that point, the mayor's office does have a list of about 100 nonprofits. And we also have a list of diverse organizations as well that are not part of some of the consortiums. So I am happy to help share the word in the future. If you want to send the mayor's office a description of what it is, I'm happy to help send out that notice from our office as well because we've tried to kind of work hard to get those email addresses for current organizations. So just happy to help. So I'm offering that for next year.
That'd be great. I'll work with Michelle on that. Thanks, Mayor Norton.
Sure. Councilmember Palmer.
Couple of questions for you. The committee, is it change every year?
This is the third year of the committee, and I made it known to the committee that once three years are up, we're going to get a new committee for next year. So the members that have served the last three years will not be in the committee next year and will go out and seek applicants again to serve on the steering committee.
And I'm assuming that the applicant or the committee, nobody has a nonprofit, they're not on a board, they don't, they don't have a tie.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, I would prefer to see them changed every year, just to get more people involved. It might be more of a headache for you, but maybe every two years might be a better idea. And just my question is, I know that the old way that we used to do it when the city calculated decisions seemed to be, to me, a much fairer and easier and equitable way of doing it. And I miss that old way. So you, I suppose, my question would be, you don't want to go back to the old system?
That'd be the council's decision to do that.
Wise, wise.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Campion.
Are we ready for motion?
Any final questions? Yeah.
Move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Campion, go ahead.
It's, as a segue, my colleague has done a great job of setting me up. I was going to say, I used to probably get 50 emails about this CDPG process from start to finish. And this year, I don't think I got more than two. So, you know, as a barometer for how well it is working, I will say, like, I'm pleased that broadly, it seems to have been accepted as a process. I didn't particularly like the old way, but, you know, to each their own. I think this way works reasonably well. And that's kind of what I was looking for in terms of reducing the crushing pain on all of the council members as we sit up here and wiggle trying to figure out how to fund as many of these as possible. I think the team's done an excellent job. I kind of agree about the two-year cycle. Maybe that's a reasonable approach. But nonetheless, I think staff has done a good job here with what we're given and who signed up. So I appreciate that, and I'm ready to move forward.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, again, I do get caught up like others do, like watching some of these groups that I think do a good job in the community. But I guess I would want to draw attention to the fact that the way we're doing the community development block grants is really focusing on housing. And we get caught up in the public service side, but really the lion's share of this money is going to rehab. And I think this is the exact right-aligned sort of spending that I want to support.
Councilmember Palmer.
Prior to being on the council, and we had the old system, I worked with a nonprofit as a volunteer and got grants. And you work very well with those, and you make it very easy. And I applaud Teresa when she did it and you were doing it, that it is a system that is not full of paperwork and horribly, I mean, you work well with everybody. So from a person that actually went out and had to ask for it and then get it, it's a system that actually does work, even though it seems a little federal government-like.
Here, here. And slow.
I would just support the mayor's comment about maybe reaching a broader audience with targeted topics because on both ends, we don't want to waste nonprofit time if it's not appropriate or relevant. We also don't want to waste city staff time. So finding that sweet spot of which organizations are potentially relevant in a slightly broader perspective, but otherwise great list of organizations for now. Any final questions, comments? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Thank you, Mr. Spenby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
I move recess.
All right, let's take a 10-minute break, and we're going to be really, we're going to be really tight on time because we need to get all our peers listening to me. Okay, we are on item G4, which is Restricted Development Conditional Use Permit, number CD 2022-006 CUP, to be known as Hilltop House. And we have two items for my colleagues adopting a resolution, approving the permit, and then waiving the requirement for Restricted Development Conditional Use Permit Final Plan. And I believe Emma Miller Shindalar is joining virtually to introduce the item. Go ahead, Miller.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Norton, Council President Carlson, and members of the city council. The applicant of this application is proposing to use the existing property as an event venue. The eight-acre property contains an architecturally significant house that will not be utilized as part of the project, but will be preserved and maintained. The applicant proposes to use this scenic site as an outdoor wedding venue. Because the proposed use is a unique development type, it is not permitted in the R1 zoning district. The applicant has requested review under the restricted development process. The applicant has also requested to waive the final plan review stage of the restricted development conditional use permit. Community Development is recommending approval of the application and the request to waive the final plan. As you stated, the decision on the application and the decision to waive the final plan should be made as two separate motions. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. I would invite the applicant or representative of the applicant to speak. You have 10 minutes, as you well know.
I'll be about 30 seconds. Bill Anderson with S E H. I have the owner here also, John Ryan. If you have any questions, we are okay with the conditions. If you want any more elaboration, we'd be happy to give you some. But it's, like Emma said, a venue on a beautiful property that we want to be able to use for events, weddings mostly.
All right, we'll call you back up after the public hearing if there are questions. All right, with that, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Do not have anyone on my list. Is there anyone joining virtually? Use the raise hand function or press star nine. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and invite any questions from my colleagues. Hearing none, I don't-
Question for staff on waiving the requirement for, I gotta get back to it here, waiving the requirement for restricted development conditional use permit. Can you speak to that a little bit, why it was in place and why it's fine to waive it in this case?
Sure, so the conditional use permit restricted development is typically a two-part application, which consists of a primary plan and then followed by a final plan. Each of those goes for both commission and council approval. Normally, when we see restricted development permits, we are looking at a very complex development, potentially a mix of uses with a lot of additional parking and a lot of changes to the site. In this case, the applicant is not constructing any new buildings. The parking lot is going to be restored. It's actually an existing parking lot, so no additional parking there. And so it's a relatively low-impact plan, which is why we are supporting the request to waive the final plan.
Okay, again, it seems to me that we have more, I think your point that it's not a development, per se, helps, but it's also, are these things covered in the conditions?
Yes, so all of the conditions, staff is confident that could be addressed without the need for a final plan.
And then last question, just in terms of staff's review. When you're in an R1 area like this and you have a use for venues, are there some restrictions on the hours, on the sound, things like that? Or are we comfortable that it's isolated enough that these are not serious problems?
So there are absolutely restrictions. The applicant is going to be complying with city ordinances. And we did request that the applicant reduce the hours of operation from midnight till 11:00 p.m. to further comply with those ordinances, as well as match wedding venues in the area that are also in residential districts such as the Plummer House or Mayo Wood. They are required to cease operation at 11:00.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's go ahead and do a motion.
Move approval, seven conditions. Second.
All right, Councilmember Campion.
Nothing to add.
Yeah, just clarifying, I think, I think it's obvious, but this is on action requested number one, it's not on number two?
Correct, we're separating them.
Yep, very good, just to clarify. Thank you.
Sorry, you say that again?
Uh, Councilmember Campion's motion is on action requested number one, adopting a resolution, approving the conditional use, it is not waiving the requirements. That's a separate motion we're going to make after we're done with this business.
Sure, that's fine. All right, Councilmember Palmer.
Just to be brief, the area is isolated. It's a beautiful site. I've been up there many different times, not in the last two years, but it's been a great sight to see and has a great history. And I think this is a venue that have worked really, really well for Rochester and obviously support this, so.
Any other comments? Let's go ahead and vote on the first part, the adopting the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries.
I'm going to move to waive the requirements for restricted development conditional use permit final plan.
Second, Campion.
All right, Councilmember Keen.
No, I think we've already gone through with staff, though, why this is justified, and I'm comfortable with those reasons.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to public hearing, G5, and we're actually going to combine it with G6. So I think we have Mr. McGeal here, and maybe you can explain a little bit briefly about why we're combining these two, and then we will take item G7 separately.
Yes, thank you, President Carlson, Mayor Norton, members of the council. Good evening, Desmond McGeal, Community Development. Items G5 and G6, we'd like to have considered at the same time because they pertain to the same land parcel or same area. First being a comprehensive plan amendment, and the second, should that be approved, would be the consideration of a zone change. So it'd just probably be a little bit more streamlined if we presented it as one item, and then to make separate motions.
Great, thank you for that. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this, either item G5 or G6? If you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and I just realized. Welcome to come up. We don't have anybody speaking at the public hearing, fortunately. So go ahead, and you have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. I had a long walk, so. So good evening, my name is Craig Britton. I'm with Wood Seth here, representing the applicant on the three applications that you have in front of you this evening. Pastor Fred is here with me from Mercy Hill Church. And staff did a very good job outlining all the information in the packets. So I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, since I reversed order here, are there questions on either item?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Invite a motion on the land use amendment.
Move approval, again, it said land use, approving the zoning map amendment for the, by Pastor Fred Shirley, to amend the land use map classification for the 9.8 acres.
You gotta do the land use plan amendment first.
Okay.
The language is wrong in G5, so just-
Okay.
But it is approving the land use amendment, so you were correct. Land use plan amendment, go ahead.
Okay, no, I think I read it off. Let me try to do it again.
Sorry, if you read it off, it'll be wrong. It's wrong.
Okay, you wanted to do it off, you want to do numbers G6 first, or do you want to do?
It's item G5, but the language underneath it with the council action is incorrect.
Is staff looking for a motion to approve the land use plan amendment?
Yeah, so you need to exchange the words, zoning map amendment, CD number, and read the number. You need to exchange that piece with land use plan amendment number CD 2022-001 LUPA. Okay, so the number's correct. You just need to change the word zoning map amendment to land use plan amendment.
Okay, so I want to move to approve the land use amendment for CD 2022-001 LUPA.
I second that land use plan amendment.
Councilmember Keen, any comments?
No, I've done enough.
Comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, this is one of the areas that I think has been changing pretty substantially. We've talked a lot about kind of development happening along the 52 corridor heading north. It's not easy because of a lot of conditions that exist, both kind of road construction as well as infrastructure, public infrastructure that either doesn't exist or exists in kind of a capacity that isn't widely open. I think this spot in particular seemed like it fits where, what this particular plan looks like in this particular zoning. So I think this is a logical next step for us. So glad to see it come forward, and thank you for the application team taking me through it.
Yeah, agreed. This is a really exciting change that will add some ability to support our residents here in our community. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Let's move on to the second part of the motion, and that's around zoning.
I'll move to approve a zoning map amendment for number CD 2022-004.
Then, could you add the second part to that motion?
And I'm also directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the first reading.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Keen.
No, nothing to add.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, Mr. McGeal, back to you, G7, related to the final plat for Mercy Hill first.
Thank you, President Carlson, yeah. This plat, it also pertains to the same property, or at least the north 10 acres of it. This is a 51-acre plat consisting, right now, it's two separate parcels. The applicant is proposing three large lots consisting of a 9, 10, and 29-acre parcels and right-of-way dedication for 37th Avenue Northwest, Windset Drive. Staff did forward an additional condition earlier today, the final configuration and street gin metrics for- The final configuration and street gin metrics for 37th Avenue are not final, and we're asking a conditional approval of the plat with the final width to be determined by the city engineer. And we are recommending approval of this relaw subdivision, thanks. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. McGee, and.
Point of order, is that update in the packet?
It is not.
No.
Only have five conditions.
And I have a separate one.
It was emailed to us earlier this afternoon.
Thank you.
Yep, all right, with that, I will invite the applicant representative up. Go ahead, you have 10 minutes if needed.
Okay, thank you. So again, Craig with Wood Seth here representing the applicants. We did review the five conditions and are in agreement with them, and again, here to answer any questions.
There's six conditions.
Yeah, including.
Do you agree with the sixth condition that staff just iterated?
Was that the one we added today?
The 37th Avenue one? Okay, I thought, okay, yep.
It is written such that the required width of 37th Avenue Northwest right-of-way shall be established by the city engineer and represented on the final plat.
Okay, yes, yep, that is, yeah, we're in agreement with that, too.
Good, thank you.
I thought that was 5F, so.
Thank you, Craig. All right, with that, we'll open the public.
Before we start, staff's waiving.
Yes, thank you, Allison Sosa, Community Development. The added condition is actually 5F, so there's still only five conditions, but it was a sub condition added. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We will open the public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak? If you're joining virtually, star nine or raise hand.
Can't believe we dissuaded people after all that.
That was really smooth, so. But that will close the public hearing, any questions of staff or the applicant? All right, go ahead, motion?
I wanna make sure that just, this is not a sixth condition, it's a sub-bullet on the fifth condition. I'm just, I wanna make sure this gets into the record correctly, that we don't approve something and then find out there's a problem with it. Can I get the applicant to say that you, you're, because this is a public works thing, this isn't a planning and zoning, so the requirement is, is that we get the correct easement established by, with the city engineer in the plan, and you're familiar with what this work is and are in agreement with it?
Correct, yes, we met with city staff last week to discuss it, so. It's just that the map right-of-way is wider than the need for the width of the roadway, so we're looking to reduce that some just based on city engineer approval, so.
Okay, I'm comfortable that as long as there's those kind of agreements in place, we can approve this and not get, what I'm worried about is we're gonna do some approval, and we don't have the right agreements in place, and I think you're establishing to me that we do have the right agreements.
Correct, yeah, we talked about the geometrics of 37th Avenue, so now we just need to adjust the right-of-way accordingly.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, Councilmember Campion.
Staff, I'll just ask you to dictate what the new 5F condition should be.
I think they just.
I wanna make sure they say it again, and I want staff to say it, because they have it in front of them, I think.
I'm playing it up right now.
Thank you.
Or Mr. McGee, he's.
Yeah, whoever has it. Now they're all looking at me like I should have it, I don't have my email open.
Okay, Allison Sosa, Community Development. 5F will read, this 37th Avenue Northwest right-of-way, as established by the city engineer, shall be represented on the final plat prior to recording.
I'd move approval with five conditions and a sub condition F as stated by staff.
Second.
Councilmember Campion?
So again, I'm glad we have all the dotted i's and crossed t's. It seems like stuff that may be of mutual benefit to both the applicant and to the city to get sorted, so I appreciate our staff always having that stuff ready for us and being ready to move this one forward.
Thanks, other discussion?
Yeah, I just, again, I appreciate the fact that we try to keep these as stable from the planning and zoning to getting here, and there are times that just doesn't work, and I just wanna make sure, those are the times I'm worried we're gonna approve something without realizing what happened, and that's kind of a worry, so. But I think we're in good shape this time.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, all right, thank you so much. Moving on to item G8, the zoning map amendment, number C D 2022-003-ZC by Ben Call, and we have, let's see, who do we have? Is it back to you, Mr. McGee?
Indeed, thank you, President Carlson, members of the council, good evening again. Yeah, the subject site is .44 acres in size, and it's located at the northwest corner of 14th Avenue Southwest and 6th Street Southwest. The comprehensive plan land use designation identifies this as low-density residential. The site is currently undeveloped, and there are single-family residential units on all sides. The applicant is requesting a change of zone from R1 mixed-single-family development to R2X, which is low-density residential extra. R2X is a permissible zone district in the low-density residential category of the comprehensive plan land use. And R2X is intended to maintain and promote areas with a mixture of residential dwelling types from low to medium density near the downtown core. The proposed change supports many of the comprehensive plan land use core principles, including integrating land use in transportation and expanding housing diversity. And then also, it addresses missing middle housing from the downtown core area. Missing middle is considered a range that is compatible in scale with single-family dwellings, can help meet Rochester's growing demand for walkable urban living, and creates a modern density which can help support public transit. Staff supports the request and notes that this site is about 1,000 feet away from the entrance of St. Mary's and adjacent to an existing transit route and at the intersection of two arterial roads. At their September 14th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the subject application, and a commission report has been attached to your staff report and has the minutes from that meeting. So that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time or later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. I will invite the applicant or representative of the applicant to speak. You have 10 minutes.
All right, good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Norton. My name is Ben Call, I'm the owner of 533 14th Avenue Southwest. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to present this proposal again this evening. My hope for the rezoning request this evening is that the request will be reviewed based on a land use manual and comprehensive plan criteria. I hope that all voices will be heard tonight, as I'm sure there will be many standing up to speak in front of us. I believe staff did a great job within their presentation and agenda packet specifically addressing section 60.338, subdivision 2 and 3 being satisfied, so I will dive into my vision and data from the comprehensive plan. The subject site is highlighted in red and in the middle of the slide, but the image here is to show the proximity to major employment, major roadways, schools, shopping, grocery, parks, and other recent development along the 14th Avenue corridor, just a couple hundred feet away. The subject property is at the corner of 6th Street and 14th Avenue Southwest. The site consists of one vacant lot totaling just shy of a half an acre. Shown on the screen are key dates as we have worked towards this proposal this evening. We have had two pre-development meetings. Our first was during the same time of the Cottage Grove project, which was later approved and currently under construction, just 480 feet away. Listening to that process, we decided to take a step back, watch, listen, and also learn. We regrouped, put together a concept that addressed many of the concerns raised during that process from neighbors and community members. Prior to our second pre-development meeting, the comprehensive plan, TOD, and also R2X zoning had been adopted, and the policy our city leaders are now following has changed. After our second pre-development meeting, the sitting staff recommended a zone change to R2X, opposed to R3 zoning or a restricted development. This same zone change request was approved and adopted at the May 17th, 2021 council meeting. A small group of concerned citizens elected to sue the city of Rochester after the zoning adoption. All claims the plaintiffs brought forward were deemed without merit by a district court judge. However, the judge found the city of Rochester made a procedural error, and that's why I'm back this evening. City staff has presented the recommendation of unwavering support and recommendation for the approval in this agenda packet presentations and at the previous planning and city council public hearings, and again this evening. A lot of thought and detail has gone into this proposal, not just from me and our team, but also our entire community development staff and our city attorney, whose sole job is to plan for today and the future of our entire community. As a graduate of John Marshall, who moved back to my hometown and got involved in my community, I was able to see the future needs of our city after attending numerous meetings like the one this evening. After attending many of the public engagement sessions and listening to the comprehensive plan get adopted, it was obvious to me that the opportunity in front of us this evening checks numerous boxes throughout our community's needs. Most notably, a market need for missing middle or infill projects in one of our downtown gateway neighborhoods. It also addresses an underserved housing product while also creating a housing style that is both innovative, but also keeps the charm and character of the neighborhood at the forefront of its design. As my vision evolved over time, I toured other cities and explored progressive cities from around the country. But more importantly, I spent time in this particular neighborhood, studying architectural style and colors to ensure my vision would conform with its surroundings. I want to show you three comparable projects within the downtown area that needed additional and recent approval to be built, two of which are on the same street and just a few hundred feet away. All three of these are infill and redevelopment projects. From a high level, the comp plan states the need for multiple housing types, also focus on infill and redevelopment, which utilizes existing infrastructure, which if you've driven around our city, this is a major item today and in our future needs. Regarding the need to utilize existing infrastructure, if we recall, this was why Dakota Middle School did not end up in southwest Rochester. The downline sewer shed could not handle the city's sprawling development pattern. It's also noted the need for walkability within our downtown core neighborhoods. And also, the updated Maxfield Housing Report noted a need for 18,000 total housing units between 2020 and 2030, and if you track building permits, we're extremely behind schedule. The next few slides are inserts from the comp plan that show these needs a bit more in-depth and why this proposal should be approved this evening. Our city had worked to develop a major update to the comprehensive plan for almost three years prior to its adoption. This plan was a collaboration of more than 7,000 community members and consultants. This plan was completed to help guide growth, development, and public investment through 2040. PS2 was adopted unanimously in 2018. On page 12 of the comp plan, it talks about our workforce in the future and how our community is going to attract, retain employees as our baby boomer generation retires. It was noted that is our preference for communities with active and highly accessible downtowns with a variety of housing options. As you continue to read our adopted plan, the Development Division calls out providing a wider array of housing choices in an urban form with the goal of improving fiscal and environmental sustainability. This development plan will encourage a wider range of housing with some example images on the right-hand side of your screen. Note the housing types outlined in red. Each of these housing types would be allowed in the R2X zoning district. The comp plan will help expand choice by creating balanced approach to development, which includes more infill and strategic redevelopment of underutilized properties by broadening the variety of housing options. The comp plan notes three types of neighborhoods, each of which encourage walkability and diverse housing types. The subject site is in the downtown gateway neighborhood. Accommodating and encouraging new while preserving and appreciating the old is definitely a challenge. R2X was designed and adopted near these downtown core neighborhoods because of the design characteristics within the zoning district being compatible with other similar zoning districts in the area, creating cohesive design and neighborhoods. There are six core principles within the comp plan. One of the main principles for this evening is enhancing the integrity of existing neighborhoods. Changes like the one in front of you this evening can be positive for our community if we reflect and enhance the integrity of these neighborhoods. The Falwell neighborhood has expressed their concern that developers are eroding their single-family neighborhood. Part of the comp plan and R2X development standard encourage and promote compatibility of uses and encourage low-to-moderate density use in predominantly residential neighborhoods. It is vital to me that we do not lose sight of the past, but work together to plan for today and also our future. This map shows that diverse housing has been sprinkled around and throughout our core neighborhoods for generations, and that I am not the first person to bring a progressive proposal forward to adapt as the needs of our community grow. These projects are part of the fabric of these neighborhoods and have been a great asset to the character of the neighborhood for generations. I present this image to show that market, I present this image to show that the market and zoning adapt and evolve over time. The R2X Zone District was specifically created in 2018 to promote areas with a mixture of residential dwelling types of overall low to medium density near the downtown core. This district is established to port residential infill and reinvestment. The proposed zoning district of R2X is permissible under the consistent, under and consistent with low-density residential land use designation of the comprehensive plan. At the very beginning of the comp plan, it notes that the comp plan should be the city's lead and overall policy guide for the growth and redevelopment of Rochester. It can appear like there has been a significant amount of public negativity surrounding the proposal, but that is from a small vocal minority. I wanna take this opportunity to share that there are many others that are not publicly vocal that support this proposal. I've had a significant amount of positive outrage directly to me from those, both in the neighborhood and throughout our entire community, expressing their support. Because this has turned into a multi-year process, I also have a list of people who have reached out to me, finding out when they can move into the project. Because of this support, I strongly believe my request for a zone change supports the city's vision and provides diversity of housing options for our community members. It is personally comforting to me to know that all of the concerns raised over the proposal have had the chance to be heard and acknowledged in both public forums like this evening and the court of law. And now we can move forward for sure, excuse me, now we can move forward knowing for sure that there are no legal concerns outstanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Call. All right, with that, we will open the public hearing, and I do have a couple of people signed up to speak, James Neal. And you have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, city council, council president and mayor, for your service and for having public input on this proposal. I have many concerns with this proposed change from R1 to R2X. The process has been very eye-opening to me regarding development in the city. I do not understand why this notion that this neighborhood that I live in is considered downtown and needs redevelopment. If the zoning is approved, several R1 houses on 14th Avenue will be separated from the rest of the R1 neighborhood. While city staff's input moves to show that the original plans of R2X could be allowed in the site based on the city's original R2X zoning areas, from my understanding, this did not include this property. I do feel that off-street parking has not been looked at in-depth enough for the project. There is no off-street parking allowed on 6th Street Southwest over the course of the whole street due to the bidirectional bike lanes. There's also limited permit parking only on one side of 14th Avenue going north, which is predominantly filled with current residential parking. Where are the visitors for this project and residential overflow from this project going to go? The developer has mentioned previously of other historic areas, six to eight blocks closer to downtown, that are mixed-zoned areas. In reality, 100 to 75 years ago, these multifamily properties were co-developed together with the surrounding R1 properties. I see this as being quite different than the redevelopment of our neighborhood with the loss of the private backyards due to the encroachment of a large two-and-a-half to three-story property filling the entire development. I'm here today to give feedback on the process that the city uses when dealing with these developments. Developers have more time with the community development than the neighbors that the developments are affecting. Why is community development not equally committed to the local community input? Community development states that their mission is to be innovative with a vision that includes customer service and commitment to community engagement. Then I ask, as a member of the immediate community, would ask, why would community development not foster more meaningful engagement with the neighbors on such developments as these? It is unfair that a developer can put proposals together. It is unfair that a developer can put proposals together, get input from community development, and then only after plans have been drawn up and completed does the developer include the neighborhood in what seems to the neighbors as simply meeting all the boxes to inform them of a plan that the developer has already checked all the boxes to. The zoning process should allow for looking at the impact of neighbors, such as the loss of private backyards, and how to prevent and remedy this loss. The community as a whole should care about what is happening to the other community members in the name of overall community development. At least one zoning commissioner raised this concern that not one change had been made by the developer after two required development community meetings where concern on scale the project was raised. I ask, why does community development not have a meeting with the affected neighbors when looking at development proposals like these and therefore work with the developer and the affected community equally? While development of this parcel will have to happen, at this point, due to the developer's decision to demolish the previous house, this does not mean that R2X is the best fit for the area. The now vacant land makes me afraid that more developers can demolish R1 residential and then ask for R2X conversions without restraint. At the Rochester Planning and Zoning Meeting, many of the commissioners had reservations on the size of this project and felt that the proposed size was not a good fit, but then felt compelled to vote in support for the zoning change due to the notion that they were not voting on the building, just the zoning. This even as the developer actively promotes the developments proposal with a large photo advertising it on the fence surrounding the now vacant property. This neighborhood is not against rental property or renters. There are many rental R1 properties that are mixed throughout this neighborhood. This neighborhood is not against change, as many of the homes in the neighborhood are being remodeled and restored. The neighborhood does feel that this process has not been a model one for the city to follow.
It's time to wrap up.
There is no mechanism for the developer to truly need to take the concerns of the neighborhood into account. I would ask that the city vote no for this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. All right, I have a Crystal Richels. Please introduce yourself with your correct pronunciation. You have five minutes.
Thank you for not assuming. Crystal Richter, I live at 621 Fourteenth Avenue. I've been there for over thirty years. You know, listen to the neighbors. My husband was on the planning board of appeals decades ago. Spicy guy was from another person on board. Listen to the neighbors. This is not a minority of the people who are against this. We had over five hundred signatures opposing this. We raised over ten thousand dollars plus the people kicked in their own money to fight this legally. I think that shows there is a majority that don't want this. And it isn't that we don't want it. This thing was blessed before it even came to our neighborhood. This is poor planning. There is a master plan that you have developed and paid for, but a developer can come in and take an R1 area and request that it be changed just like that for profit. And that's another thing. I'll be nitpicky here. You have to look at the little details. That is a very unique intersection. It's a theater from fifty-two downtown to St. Mary's. There's ambulances and service vehicles galore. There's no street parking. FedEx, UPS, there's no allowance for any service vehicles for that. It's one-point-five car space per unit, twelve units. Who has one-point-five cars? There's usually two cars. Where do the additional six to twelve cars park? There's not even guest parking. I have a friend that lives in a row house near TJ Maxx. There's two guest spots for six row houses. There's nothing. There's a small tree. Talk about green space. It's not going to survive. It's too big. We want to compromise. Put the unit there, but make it smaller. We've asked, then you make it smaller. And on the traffic thing, our petition was turned down because in the email, the city staff said it would cost the developer money. It would cost him money. So I did my own study. I asked our FedEx guy, who parks on the street, blocks traffic on my block and every other block. I said, you see that development down there? Where would you park when you deliver for twelve units or whatever? He said, oh, I'd either park on the street so at the intersection, people will have to go buy them. It's only allowing for two lanes of traffic. And he said, or I reverse in. I said, reverse in? What do you mean? He said, I'd have to back in to deliver to those other six units back there. And I said, you don't pull in? He said, no, I can't because I can't back out. FedEx's number-one policy for delivering, when you have to park into a situation like that, is you reverse in. You never reverse out. So you're going to have somebody at the intersection backing up into that, and you're going to have car stacking. And I said, well, what about the six additional units on Sixth Street? What are you going to do about that that weren't there before? Well, I'm going to park on the north side of Sixth Street. I can't park across the street because I can't cross traffic. That's not allowed. So I'll park on the north side, and that's what they'll do. And there's nobody looking at that. All we're asking is reduce the size. If you want to make it R2X, fine. And the other thing at the zoning meeting, there were a lot of people against the size. But when city staff chimed in and said, you're voting on concept, you're not voting on this project. Get with it, please. The reality is, this is what you're voting on. This is twelve townhomes going on a very unique corner. We don't mind that he builds something there, but twelve? No green space? It might meet the percentages. What about runoff? What about snow removal? Is a truck going to reverse into that? And then where did the overflow parking people go? We're willing to compromise, but you're not because it's about profit for one developer who has a lot of connections. So let's, you know, listen to the neighborhood. We'll work with you, but work with us. Do that. That's all we're asking. And the other thing, too, our ward person has been great, and I hope that when your neighborhood has this situation and has five hundred signatures, that each ward would support that ward, because isn't that what we're supposed to do? We don't get everything we want, but let's compromise. What can you do to help us compromise and make this work for all of us?
Thank you. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? I'm just going to check virtually one second. If you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Seeing no one, come on up. Please introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
I'm John Cassidy. I live on Sixth Street Southwest. This morning, when I looked at the agenda for this meeting, I came to the conclusion that the council meeting is just a formality and that the council decision was made long ago. To see the first reading of the rezoning on the agenda following this vote leads one to believe that the community input means nothing and that the five hundred-plus signatures opposing the development are not part of the discussion. Additionally, how can it be that the opinion of planning and zoning commissioners carries no weight? If one was to read the transcript of the planning meeting where the topic was discussed, you would see that a majority of commissioners wanted to vote against the rezoning but could not, since their justification would have been based on the actual development that the developer will be constructing and not on the change in zoning itself. How is it that so many people do not want this development as currently conceived, but the city council, community development, are pushing relentlessly to get this built in our little neighborhood? Why this many units? Why Spot Zone, R2X in this southwest neighborhood when none of the other areas zoned R2X have seen new zoning implemented? Yes, there's always need, always needs to be the first, but approval of this rezoning will set precedence so that any developer can propose high-density development in an R1 neighborhood so long as setbacks and height requirements are met. Our neighborhood is not against progress or redevelopment. If the developer had proposed four or six units for sale or rent that fit well in the neighborhood, the community would not be in opposition. But twelve units crammed in to maximize profits is just wrong. It's wrong for the neighborhood, and it's wrong for Rochester. Just like planning and zoning, you can say that you are only approving the rezoning, but you are really giving the developer a blank check to build without constraints as to density so long as setbacks are met. R2 stifles community input, which is the goal of developers. You should deny this rezoning and revisit R2X as it is currently conceived. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Davy, and I live on Sixth Street Southwest, just down the hill from the proposed project. It's interesting, I first entered this chamber back in 2013 after moving back to Rochester. I grew up here, but spent many years up in Eden Prairie as that community grew and grew and grew, and I watched the development that occurred there with great interest and got involved in the community while I was there. Upon moving back, on my block, Sixth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, and Sixth Street, a project was proposed, Fifth on Fifth. Some of you may remember the discussions. I was drawn into it. I was, you know, it's my block. And so I came here to testify and to speak to the body at that time. Thirty-nine units we were able to get it down to from a proposed fifty on an R1 lot on the corner, residential, single-family homes, except for one right next door is a duplex. And so, you know, I would have loved to have seen a project like this go on that corner. We were actually trying to get the developer to consider something like this instead of the forty units. Then we move ahead to 2018, 2019. I think the R2X was approved in August of 2019. And at that time, I was the president of the Historic Southwest Neighborhood Association and, of course, was greatly involved with all of the core neighborhood redevelopment and infill and so on. And so, the R2X, you know, I went to many of the community input sessions, which there were many, and there were thousands of people who gave input on R2X. And yet, an R2X map was created by staff and suggested by, I guess, the consultants and then reviewed by staff and council and voted on. My home actually is in R2X, and I support R2X. I testified at the meeting in August when it was approved, and my concern back then was not the ADUs, you know, and adding density through auxiliary dwelling units, but having just a plain old box put on a neighborhood that had no architectural detail and was just the cheapest thing that a developer or builder could build. So that was my comments to this body at that time, is I wanted to see something with some architectural integrity, detail, and fit the neighborhood. Now, this hearing tonight and your vote is not about this project. I understand that. But I wanted to give a little bit of feedback on just my involvement and why I'm here to support this. This is a project that, let me just go back. So R2X is, you know, it's what we have. I don't think there's been a single R2X project created since the city council voted on it in 2019. It's about time we, you know, stand up and support that ordinance. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Please introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
Yes, thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Lauren Rosenthal. I met Ben a couple of years ago in the process of helping my cousin, who's a resident here, find a home, which was very difficult for us, actually. He's coming here to do his residency. He wanted a place that he could live, that was comfortable and well-maintained, that he wasn't going to have problems with. Appliances weren't going to break. HVAC wasn't going to break. Hot water heaters weren't going to break. There wasn't going to be leaks. And in many of the rental properties here, that was hard to find. Instead of renting a property that he could live in for the five years that he was going to be here, we ended up having to go through the bidding process and the bidding wars of Rochester during match season to find him a home. The home needed work. It had mold. It was six months of renovation before he could live in it comfortably and a hundred thousand dollars later. It's very hard for a lot of the residents and fellows and nurses or med students coming here to participate in renovations like that and in purchases like that. Because of this experience, going back five years ago, and meeting some of his friends that were going through the same issues, I personally invested my own funds into multiple properties here to try to better them and make them beautiful. I think a lot of the members of the local community like what I do. But it becomes very cost-restrictive. It's a lot of times when you're going in and trying to buy these old homes, it becomes very expensive and you're still having to work with old bones. It's much easier to take a vacant property and build something that's brand-new and energy-efficient that's going to last for the next hundred years. You know, after spending time with Ben about what I should invest in this community here and what made sense, he started talking about this project, and I was like, yeah, this is great. There's plenty of residents and fellows, nurses, that need homes like this here. I really hope that this proposal gets the approval, as many professionals start their careers here in Rochester. It's, you know, it's, right now, I have six properties of my own, and I have a waiting list of four people who would love to live in one of those nicely renovated properties, and I just don't have anything available for them. They're hard to find. They're hard to buy. They're expensive to renovate. They would love to live in one of these townhomes, and they're people that you want here in Rochester as part of your community. These are the type of people that you want. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Final call online, star nine or raise hand function. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and Mr. Call, would you like to provide a response? You have five minutes.
So unlike some developers before me, I took the time upfront to do my research based off the feedback and conversations I heard over multiple development projects going through the process over the years in these downtown neighborhoods. And I decided to design my proposal accordingly and also fully transparent to everyone that's involved when I was meeting with the neighborhood over the couple of years. Because of this, I did not go the typical developer route when you show significantly more units and negotiate down. I did not show service parking and eventually remove it. I did not ask for R4 zoning and negotiate down to R2X. I did not create a gap in financing and ask for TIF. Instead, I listened and attended the May twenty-second, June seventeenth, September twenty-fifth, October third, and October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission and city council meetings surrounding Cottage Grove and infill development. And based off that feedback and conversations, I elected to do the right thing from the beginning based off the questions and concerns that were raised, and I designed my proposal accordingly based off that information. This, along with my proposal already being proved at the May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting, this is why my proposal has not changed from the last city council meeting until now. I want the neighbors to fully understand that I have heard them during this multi-year process. We did a tree study to see the species of the trees on the site, the height and the size of the tree canopies, and we designed our site plan to ensure we could save as many mature trees as possible. At our very first neighborhood meeting, the trash enclosure was brought up that I showed a picture of on my plan. I have enclosed the trash area so it looks better for the neighbors that drive by and also everyone who walks by this neighborhood. Mrs. Richter brought up FedEx and deliveries on this site. I have ensured cars can turn around in the driveway. We actually ran a simulation with my architecture and engineering firm, and funny enough, Ms. Richter brought up FedEx. It turns out through the simulation that we're able to park four full-size FedEx trucks in the driveway. A FedEx truck is seven feet wide and twenty-five feet long. The alleyway between the two proposed buildings is thirty-one feet. The alleyway between the two proposed buildings is thirty-one feet. So that has been addressed and discussed. Traffic is addressed the best it can be based off the zoning criteria. If there was not a parking maximum within R2X, I would love to have twenty-four covered parking stalls to do my part in keeping cars off the street, but that's unfortunately out of my control. Although it may not be super apparent in settings like this, I have heard you and I want this to be done right. I have heard the Planning Commission, council, neighbors, and community members as we have progressed over this multi-year proposal process. There have been concerns raised this evening that I have addressed behind the scenes. There are also concerns that are unfortunately out of my control. I have tried to address both positive and negative feedback and implement a blend of both into the proposal and project. This is not the first time we have discussed this rezoning. During the last round and echoed again here tonight, a small but vocal number of residents have expressed concern regarding, not the actual rezoning, but the proposed development. The major concerns noted center around traffic congestion, whether rezoning should be, could be deemed spot zoning, as well as a number of technical and procedural challenges that were brought forth by these concerns, community members. Both MINDOT and our local traffic engineer have said there will be no significant impact on traffic and it is acceptable proposal. Spot zoning is not a feeling, it is a legal matter, and the city attorney has made it clear that this is not spot zoning. Additionally, the fact that the lawsuit the plaintiffs brought against the city did not include false claim of spot zoning suggests their own attorney did not believe in the merits of that claim. The lawsuit and subsequent ruling are public record, so we do not need to discuss each complaint in detail. But in quick summary, the judge threw out all of the plaintiff's claims and they were determined by the judge to be without merit. However, the judge did find a procedural flaw in the process and that's why we are here this evening. I said this earlier, but it is personally comforting to know that all of the concerns raised have had the chance to be heard and acknowledged in both public forum and the court of law and we can now move forward knowing for sure there are no legal concerns outstanding. Thank you for your consideration of this proposal on zone change. Thank you.
And Mr. Call, you might want to just stay put for a second. And we have Mr. McGee on line two. Mr. Bransford, go ahead with questions.
Yep, I have a question. You mentioned it, so I just want to reiterate. Did I hear you correctly that you're going to be needing more parking?
No.
No. Well, okay. Can you clarify your position that it's out of your control that you can't put twenty-four cars there?
That is correct. R2X has a zoning, parking minimum and also maximum.
Okay. So you're just not going to provide the same amount of parking for the people that live there, right? So you're not, so it's a twelve plaques, two people, potentially twenty-four cars needed and you're just going to waive the need for extra cars?
I'm planning to follow the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Well, what does that mean exactly, Ryan? So, the R2X district has a parking minimum of point seven spaces per unit and a parking maximum of one point five per unit. Not that it's necessarily relevant to the zone change, but the project that we're talking about has twelve units and the applicant has proposed twelve parking spaces. Okay. Got it. So, one other quick question is, if memory serves, when you were talking to us at the DIM, this was originally considered an R3 development, is that true?
Yes, and I was following and basing that original request at my very first pre-development meeting with the city, based off the information that I learned based off the request from the Cottage Grove developers.
Okay. So in your opinion, it is, this development would be appropriate in an R3 zone?
No.
Why?
Because a lot has changed since that. And as I noted in my original presentation, TOD, R2X, on the camper rounds of plan have been adopted since that very first pre-development meeting, so therefore my opinion has changed and I'm now requesting R2X.
Okay. Well, density isn't an opinion. If you were to calculate the density of this development, what do you think it would be?
Do you want me to tell you specifically what it is?
Yeah.
Okay. If you'd like, we can come back.
Yeah, don't worry about it. That's fine. I calculated it once myself, but we won't go there. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Palmer?
Two quick questions. One, it's not a vacant lot when you bought it. I mean, you tore a house down, correct?
That is correct. The house was demolished after the last zoning change was approved and I started to progress towards development based off that approval.
It was a rental unit, correct?
It was, it was a single-family house and when I purchased it, it became a rental unit.
And when you bought the piece of property, it wasn't RX2 zoning, correct?
No, R1.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Councilmember Dennis?
So, I know this is, this is not a development meeting, this is a zoning, but a lot of questions have been brought to me about ADA compliance. And can you elaborate if these buildings are ADA compliant or what are the limitations for making them ADA compliant?
Sure. Good question. So this specific proposal is not ADA compliant. This particular property is a much smaller scale on a proposal, but it is creating a diverse housing option that is not currently there in the neighborhood. Some of the other projects that I have been involved in, like brick on Broadway, does provide significant ADU accessibility. So it's essentially just a different type of housing product.
Any final questions? Councilmember Keane?
Yeah. I hate to make you suppose things, but we know that there's a bunch of zones that are a bunch of areas in 2019 that were made, R2X. Why wouldn't this project go on there versus going into an area that's R1 and try to change it?
A lot of it has to do with location, walkability, and the ability to do a project like this. And it's not the fact that I haven't looked for other properties within that specific zoning ordinance, there just hasn't been any opportunities that have currently presented themselves that would work for a project like this that I've been able to find thus far. But I'm highly interested in looking for other zones because I think this type of project would be well-suited for people that are looking for something like this.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bransford, do you have a question for staff?
Yeah. I actually sent a picture to Killy Geisler, and if you could bring that up. This isn't meant to be a gotcha, okay?
Is there a question?
There is a question. So, here's the quandary. I wanted to do this during my discussion and was told that it was more appropriate during the Q and A, right? But for me, a picture is worth a thousand words, okay? Given its location and the number of little green pluses there, compared with up at the top of R3 and all the way over there at R4, is it possible that the upper end of R2X is in fact medium density? Based on this just visually? We call it low density, but is it really? I mean, it's a transition from R2 to R3. So isn't there a Venn diagram or these things overlap at the upper end?
Go ahead, Mr. Yatzer.
There isn't a Venn diagram. This isn't an exact science, there isn't a science equation behind it, right? So, the decision of is R2X low-density residential or medium-density residential, that's a decision for this council to make. So that's sort of what you're deciding tonight, is is it compatible with the low-density residential? Our recommendation is yes. Those lots to the north that are R1 right behind that R3, we would support R2X in that area as well. And what jumps out at me is that those lots are sharing essentially a lot line split by an alley with R3. And so, I would suggest that what that shows is that residential is compatible with residential. So, just in closing, you know what? I'll say what I want to say during our discussion.
Councilmember Campion?
You can take that off. Just want to clarify fair. Page 380 lists the Zone Change Map Amendment Review Criteria. Section 6338, subdivision two. I just want to call out because I've heard four questions in a row, I think, before preceding Councilmember Bransford's recent question that would say are difficult to fit under those criteria. So I want to just reinforce everyone that discussion of the development is inappropriate in this context, that we are here to evaluate the zone change request on those criteria. Like, that is the criteria available for us and we should be very careful to keep any questions kind of in the range of what those are asking us to evaluate.
Councilmember Dennis?
Okay. Yeah, so this is brought up because you just mentioned that you have offers already. Residents are talking about there's buildings that are vacated, you know, that they don't, you know, don't have anyone. Have you got offers for most of your, or how many of your?
I moved that, this is in German.
Yeah. Well, I'm curious because of the price.
Not in German, we're talking about the zoning change.
I understand completely. I feel like it's important to know.
We're going to move on. All right. Councilmember Bransford?
I'll save my comments for later.
Let's get a motion on the table.
I'll have a three-part motion. I'm going to move to approve the zoning app amendment, CD 2022-003ZC. A second part, approving the facts and findings found in the attachment. And the third part, directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for first reading.
Second.
Madam President, just briefly, did you close the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah. He was speaking at the rebuttal. Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Keane has the floor.
Yeah, again, we do get things muddled here between a project and a zoning amendment and I'm trying to stay focused on the zoning amendment. This is residential to residential. I find it acceptable.
Thank you. Other discussion? Councilmember Campion, then Bransford?
I'll yield to Councilmember Bransford.
Go ahead.
Were you going to gather yourself? I can talk.
Yeah, I'm going to gather myself.
Sure. The sentiment I wanted to say, I understand from the member of the public who mentioned it feels like cowering behind this idea that you can't evaluate the project that's in front of you, you have to look at the zone change and how that happens repeatedly. I think the reality is, it's a little bit, it's a little bit challenging in our spot because if we wander far from that, we get sued. And, you know, I don't know who has experience with that, but the reality is we have to stay very close to these criteria. So, I think just in the interest of moving this along, I want to reiterate that I've read and agree with staff's drafted findings, in fact, in that I believe they support the conclusion that this can be approved and should be approved.
Thank you. Go ahead.
First of all, I value every single person sitting here, okay? This isn't eighteen months ago when I was kind of a newbie to this. And I do value staff and I really appreciate the time they took to meet with me and talk this through. But criteria 3A on the compatibility of the zoning district gives me heartburn because of the definition of R2X as low-density residential. It's like it makes this box where you can put a medium-density development and all of a sudden it becomes low-density. I have a real problem with that. And I'm not going to solve that here. It's a process thing, it's a definition thing, and I am going to address it because I think it's wrong. It's wrong to call R2X low-density residential. That's why I feel like my hands are tied behind my back, especially if I can't calculate the density, right? That's just wrong. I mean, we can't have little boxes where definitions go to die, right? There's this gap between R1, R2, and then R3 and in the middle in there, we can't really talk about it. It's just low-density. That's why it gives me heartburn. It's just wrong. Because what we actually have here, in my opinion, this is my opinion, okay? I'm speaking as much as a resident of Falwell as a city council member and that's also what makes this difficult for me, is what we really have is an R3 development, a commercial intensity, R3 development nestled up against R1 houses. Without a land use plan amendment, that's wrong. That's wrong. And that's why I'm voting against it.
Councilmember Bransford? Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I was on the council when we did the R2X. We set the boundaries of the R2X for a reason to incentivize this development in these areas and we've not gotten much, I don't believe, but I don't think expanding it makes it easier to get more. So I think we need to stay to our original R2X boundaries until we find a five or six years that is not working or is working. So I'm not in favor of expanding the R2X zoning.
Thank you. Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, thank you. So my question that I didn't ask was because it's such a long process. You know, the need of the community does play, I believe, into a factor on changing zoning. So that's why I was asking the offers and, but I do know it's a Mayo neighborhood and I hear people speaking on why, you know, diverse housing and mixed housing is important. This has been, I kind of wrote down a few things because I have, I've been taking notes and I've been talking to people and calling people up, reading their emails. I've been to the site four times to walk around and get a feel for what it would be like to have this kind of a development. And it is an incredibly intensely passionate issue for people because every vote that council members make impacts livelihoods, impacts housing, impacts, you know, people's homes. And so it's a very personal issue and I, you look at the council, you know, high empathy on my charts, so I'm definitely looking at people's views. I wrote, okay, so I have to just commend Councilmember Bransford. I think every council member should be as passionate to their neighborhoods as you have been because, wow, I mean, you have reached out and you've advocated for your residents. I also know that in Ward Six, I voted for increased housing because I, in apartment complexes, because every ward needs to have more housing. It's important with the epidemic of, you know, finding homes for people. And I understand affordability is incredibly important. We need affordable housing when we have the incomes that we have. But not just my family, who's like fifty percent AMI, but also all families. There's different levels of affordability. So I just want to realize that with the values of our city and, and I just, it's a procedural error that's bringing this back to us. I voted for it in the past and I know kind of when we talk about the four-three vote, every vote that voted for it is a swing vote to change it. I just cannot find a reason to, a factual reason, a technical reason, talking to staff, talking, looking at this, to not approve it. And so I have to take my emotions and my empathy out because I feel that we need to have more housing, more mixed housing, more housing at every level because we just have a housing epidemic. And so I looked at the, I appreciate talking to the developer on the phone, making Mr. Call, for all the time he's been talking to me. I've talked to residents, I've seen the plans and I just, I'm going to, I'm going to stay, integrity is doing what you said you're going to do. And I vowed when I ran for office to vote for housing. I voted for it in the past and I'm going to vote again for this today.
Thank you, Councilmember Dennis. I appreciate a lot of the comments that have been made and everybody's different perspective in supporting neighborhoods and my role is to support the needs of the broader community and we've, this is our fourth meeting on this issue and we've already hashed it out so I don't have anything additional to add. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I'm going to say it again, Mr. Call, you've done an excellent job with the design and pulling features from the neighborhood and I think that's very important. For eleven years, I lived on Sixth Street in a permit parking area with barely one parking spot and a minivan that barely fit in my garage. So I understand the inconvenience that's going to be with the residents that live here. I would never want to live on that corner. I used to walk my son to Falwell. The stack back at the four-way stop is ridiculous at 3:15 PM. I've had a problem with this particular zoning since the beginning. Living in a historically red-lined neighborhood on the east side, a core downtown neighborhood area, I disagree with Mr. Spindler-Craig's designation that this is not spot zoning. I very much feel that it is. When you look When you look at the map of where R2X was applied, when it was applied, there's no way to agree that it's not spot zoning, and that's my opinion. I do not like the voice of the people being taken away. I ran as the voice of the people, and R2X is something in between that, in this case, is not low-density when there are twelve proposed residents on a double lot. And if you go to the north, you see thirteen residents on four lots. And then when you go to the northeast, you see fourteen residents on three lots. When you calculate the ratio, this is not a low-density development. I would call it medium-density for sure. So I think that a land-use planning amendment is in order for this, and I move to amend the motion to include a land-use planning amendment.
Second, Bransford.
I don't. Can we clarify how that would actually be possible?
Yeah, I need more information. Are you doing a land-use plan amendment for just this lot? Are you doing it for a larger area? This also wasn't noticed as a public hearing for a land-use plan amendment, so I don't know that we can add that tonight.
And are you saying to medium-density?
Yes, this is medium-density. This is not low-density.
Okay, so I don't think we can, I would look to the city attorney, but I don't think we can just add that. I think that we would, you would either need to continue this to bring it back as a land-use plan amendment, and we would need to notice a public hearing as a land-use plan amendment. There is state statute around how to do that. So that would be my recommendation, if, if that's what you're looking to do.
Thank you, Mr. Yetzer. I appreciate that information because I too am unfamiliar with this.
So we had a motion and a second, but we're gonna, can we strike it? We don't have to actually dispense of it, correct?
I rescind my second.
Okay, thank you.
What?
I want one desperately, but I'll rescind it.
It sounds like that is not the approach we can take, so we're gonna, he's rescinding his second.
Got it. So I need to redo my motion. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Available motion to use to continue this.
Right, exactly. And that's what I will change my motion to, move to continue to, Mr. Yetzer, you said we need two weeks' notice?
No.
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 You would have to continue it to a date. I mean, we would have to notice ten days prior to the public hearing. We would need time to put some stuff together, so.
Okay, move to continue to request a LUPA in giving time to do this in November. November what?
Second.
November second?
Yeah, so just a couple of things.
Just point of order, there is no second. This hasn't received a second.
November second.
There's no second of the motion, staff can't.
I think he, no, 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 he's just clarifying what she's actually asking.
Couple of things, I just wanna make sure that there's someone willing to second this motion before we get into a couple of things because the reality is nobody might support it.
Okay. Pause, is there a second?
I'm gonna say something right now.
No, you can't, not when there's a motion.
I'm just done.
Okay.
I'm just done.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Kirkpatrick. Did you have any other comments?
My only other comment is, when you look at the map for the city, these units are already there for zoning, and this project hasn't been approved, feels again as though administration is leading the witness to the public. And that offends me.
Pause. Councilmember Dennis has a comment.
Yeah, I just have to chime in. I agree with Councilmember Kirkpatrick. I think that staff should not have had the first reading today. I think that does.
Just point of order, the first reading wouldn't have happened if we, if, it won't happen if we don't approve it.
Exactly, but the same thing is, it, it shows that it's already, it's, it's a.
Point of order, there was a mistake made by city scheduling that delayed this to begin with, so we were working with our developers' timeline after multiple delays to prepare for the ordinance first reading should this pass.
Well, that wasn't, I mean, what the public sees is that there was first reading, so I, I wanted to just chime in that I think that, that should not have been on the agenda. And then I am upset with the eighty, not, you know, I hear that there's property, but I think in the future, I just really wanna push that public hearings and that every single house in Rochester should be accessible by every single person regardless of their ability level. So I just wanted to chime that in for the developer and future developments that I, I'm not happy with, with how this, but this is a zoning, and I stick to the point that it's, it's a zoning, that there's no reason not to.
All right, any final comments related to the zoning proposed change?
Point of order, we're still on the zone change, correct?
Still on the zone change, no motion was, no amended motion happened. Councilmember Keen, then Campion.
Again, I was gonna say, we, there's some things about the records that, because this has been extended and kicked back and things like that, but based on the fact that we've all been saying, I'd like to call the question.
All right. All in favor, actually, let's do a roll call. Clerk Geisler?
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Councilmember Bransford.
Nay.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Nay.
Councilmember Palmer.
Nay.
Councilmember Dennis.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
There are four ayes and three nays.
All right, motion carries four to three. Thank you, everyone. I know that's a really hard topic and appreciate everybody's thoughtful perspectives. We are at 10:08, so we are gonna kick off our next public hearing. Just a note that in order, we're gonna keep going, so if you need a break, please do get up and, and take one for yourself. But we do have two public hearings left that need to get done tonight. So after we do G9, we are gonna have to suspend the rules and get, and ask to do enough time to do G10 as well. Okay? So let's do G9, get up as you need, but we will get going with that one, and we have Emma Miller Shindalar to introduce the special district amendment, CD 2022-002 SDA, to be known as Chateau Circle.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Norton, President Carlson, and members of the city council. My name is Emma Miller Shindalar, Planner with Community Development. The application before you is a Chateau Circle Special District Amendment, and I'll just start out with a little bit of history on the special district. The Chateau Circle Special District was established in 2014 to foster the development of a comprehensively-planned, pedestrian-oriented, and neighborhood-compatible commercial district. Generally, the Chateau Circle Special District is consistent with the B1 district and has additional requirements for architecture, landscaping, pedestrian design, building orientation, and building location. The applicant proposes the addition of daycare facility as a permitted use in the special district and an updated traffic study which reflects today's built environment. Intensity in the Chateau Circle Special District is regulated by use restrictions, cumulative building size, and traffic trips generated. The Chateau Circle Traffic Impact Study was initially completed at the time the special district was planned. The purpose of the study was to determine the potential traffic impacts that development of this area would have on adjacent public roadways. The traffic analysis was based on future assumed uses and a, an outdated street alignment. In 2017, Chateau Road was realigned and a new traffic study was completed to account for the realignment and built conditions. The traffic study was accepted by Public Works in 2017 and is still an acceptable traffic study today. The report shows that the city's traffic service standards will still be met by these higher trip generation limits. All necessary traffic mitigation was installed during the early phases of development. If the special district amendment is approved, daycare will be a permitted use in the Chateau Circle Special District. Additionally, the traffic study dated October 6, 2017, will be utilized to set trip generation limits for the special district going forward. Myself and Ryan Yetzer are prepared to answer questions on this application, and the city traffic engineer is also available for questions regarding the traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would the applicant or representative of the applicant like to speak? Please introduce yourself, and you have ten minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Rick Penns, part of the ownership group for the Chateau Circle and 55th Street Holdings. And we are here tonight to request the two changes to the Chateau Circle Special District, which will allow for the completion of the development. The proposed use, uses to complete the development, starting from the west to the east, are 12,000-square-foot daycare on Lot 1A, which is proposed on the furthest lot to the west, and a 7,400-square-foot multi-use tenant building with 3,800 square foot of it being a very well-known and respected family-friendly restaurant with a drive-thru that presently exists in Rochester, and the remaining 3,600 square feet of it being a retail slash office. This building would be situated on Lot 2, which is just east of the existing Firestone. The two changes we are requesting to the special district are straightforward. They are first, to include a daycare facility to the permitted, permitted uses found on 64X230 Subdistrict Regulations subdivision 3A. We feel this use aligns with what the special district was designed to accomplish. Second, to add the traffic study down October 6, 2017, a supplement number three to the sub-district regulations subdivision 5G. There is a mechanism in place in the special district for allowing this change, and it is found in subdivision 5G Lot Development Standards, and it states, "The maximum allowable size of the neighborhood commercial structure collectively shall not exceed 81,500 square feet of gross leasable floor area." Which should be noted that if we get the businesses we are representing here tonight, along with the existing businesses in the development, we would collectively have a total of less than 35,000 square feet of gross leasable floor area, which is only 43% of what we are allowed in the development. It goes on to say, "The size and intensity of the allowable uses noted in the traffic, are noted in subdivision three of this section is limited by the approved traffic impact report. A request," which is what we're doing here tonight, "for use or uses that will exceed the vehicle trip limitations of the approved traffic study dated June 20, 2014, supplement number one dated August 27, 2014. Supplement number two dated October 16, 2014, shall require an amendment to the traffic study and must be reviewed by City Public Works and approved by the common council before said use or uses are permitted. A type III phase II application and procedure is required for an amendment to the traffic study and special district plan. Our traffic study has already been reviewed by Public Works and found to be, and I quote, "still an acceptable traffic study today." The report shows that the city traffic service standards can still be met with these higher trip generation limits. All necessary traffic mitigation was installed during the early phases of the development." Which what the city is referring to here is the fact that we as developers in the beginning of this project paid for the design and installation of a new intersection at Chateau Road and 55th Street, expanding it to five lanes wide and widening Villa Road, adding curb and gutter, sidewalks, utilities, sewer, and water, the entire length of the project. I also wanna point out that we have attended the neighborhood meetings and have heard their concerns, and I will say we do understand and acknowledge some of their concerns, but have one point we cannot agree with. This is the reference to the phrase "low-intensity development." Nowhere in the special district does it mention this to be a low-intensity development. On the contrary, the development was designed to handle 81,500 square feet of gross leasable floor area from 18 different commercial uses up, with up to four drive-throughs. The only governing factor was tracking the trip generations throughout the project to regulate intensity and the special district built in a mechanism in which for us to ask for more traffic if need be. The fact that the businesses that are currently there and the businesses we have wanted to come in to complete the development are under 35,000 square feet of gross leasable floor area instead of the 81,500, seven different businesses instead of up to 18, only two drive-throughs instead of four demonstrates that this lot is a lot less intense than it could be. Lastly, I just wanna say that we have buyers now for every remaining lot who are willing to build under the already-approved architectural standards required by the special district. They're here tonight, I think virtually, and are willing to answer any specific questions you might have. We are simply asking that you approve the two proposed changes tonight so we can move forward with the completion of the Chateau Circle development. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to turn over the rest of my time to Jay Meyer. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jay Meyer. Believe it or not, this development has been in progress for nearly nine years. Since the start of it, we have held numerous meetings with the neighborhood representatives. We've attended several planning commission and city council meetings over these nearly nine years as well, and we're really close to finalizing all the pieces of this development. Before you today is a simple question. Do you want to support these changes to allow a daycare, one of the city's most urgent needs, and a healthy family restaurant? This restaurant we have, under contract, is a fast, is not a fast-food restaurant in the way that most of us think about fast food. It serves healthy food in ceramic, in ceramic-like dishes, in metal silverware, not paper and plastic packaging with plastic silverware. It does not have a takeout component, or it does have a takeout component that is served through a drive-thru. You can think of restaurants like Nupa, Noodles, or Panera, and you'll be on the right track of what we are talking about here with the business we have under contract. If I were a neighbor or a council member, I would want guarantees to make sure that these good businesses are indeed the ones to go in, and we would fully support language that gives assurance that it is indeed a daycare and a healthy family restaurant like Nupa, Panera, or Noodles that does go in. In addition, I would ask, why would the city not call this a standard restaurant with a drive-thru? You know, there are standard restaurants with drive-throughs. Remember Baker Square, for example, and there are restaurants that you walk up to order and get food that are standard restaurants, take Nupa, for example. You could probably make the argument either way on how to categorize this restaurant. It's unique, but why not call it the thing that would protect the neighborhood in the future? So hopefully, we won't let politics, feelings, or emotions determine the outcome of this development. We can leave here tonight not having to wonder what else might go in this development. We have a daycare and a healthy family restaurant. We ask that you follow the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will open the public hearing, and I have several people lined up here to speak, and we'll also check online. There are others. Looks like the first person I have is Sheri Rowcamp. Sorry about the last name pronunciation. You can introduce yourself. And you have five minutes.
Yep, another late night. Sheri Rowcamp, 5769 Longboat Road, Northwest. Thank you all for letting us speak tonight. Originally, the development with the developer wanted to create a B4 commercial development surrounded by residential homes. The city council at that time, as referenced, 2014, said that was clearly not appropriate, and a special district was created. A special district was created with the developer, with staff, with council, with neighbors. The special district was created to protect the surrounding neighborhood and to ensure a lower-intensity, neighborhood-compatible development. The developers arguing that trips are not intended to manage the intensity of the development. They're saying the trips were included in the special, special district to ensure proper functioning of the nearby streets and intersections. While a point of that is partially true, there are historical references in emails and hours, hours of public hearings at these council meetings where trips were negotiated as a way to manage the intensity of this neighborhood. Traffic studies and/or traffic impact statements are automatically required for large projects. Proper functioning of the streets and intersections is automatically reviewed for all large projects. That is an assignment of the, the city staff. Trips would never be included as a section in a special district in order to protect the streets and intersections. Trips were included to protect the size and intensity of those developments. Those trips were put in place to protect our neighborhood, and tonight I would request that you deny this, this amendment.
All right, next up, I have Al Zalkowski.
President Carlson, councilmembers, and mayor, thank you for your time and for your stamina. My name is Al Zalkowski, 5603 Longboat Road. I live across the street kitty-corner from the eastmost lot. And I'd like to add a few comments, and then I'll, I'll also talk to the handout. But I wanna start with first noting that originally this area was three single-family homes on large, well-wooded. homes on large, well-wooded residential lots. The developer purchased the property, tore down the homes and cleared cut the lots, and proposed creating a high-intensity commercial development in this area that is surrounded by single-family residential homes. The city council said that was clearly not appropriate and as noted, we have the special district that was created to protect the surrounding neighborhood to ensure the development would not become high intensity. So on your handout, I just ask you to please remember that unique to this special district is a set of trip numbers that was put in place to manage the overall intensity and to ensure a lower intensity, neighborhood-compatible development. The developer is asking now to replace these original numbers with the numbers that would allow the intensity of the development to increase by a factor of three-point-six times. This would clearly be considered high intensity. Additionally, keep in mind, if the amendment was to be approved, the developers under no obligation to build anything that they may indicate tonight. It would also open up all of the lots within the development and no restrictions on any of the property owners from further increasing the intensity of their lots. So therefore, on behalf of the neighborhood, we request that you please deny this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Prizler, Prizler?
Good evening, I know it's been long. My name is Rachel Prizler. I live in the neighborhood, fifty-five seventeen Longboat Road. I am adjacent to one of the commercial, future commercial properties that is actually currently owned by Ultra Bank, but that's potentially changing. So my neighbors have done a really great job with giving you the numbers and giving you what the intensity is going to be just by adding a daycare, which of course, I would agree that daycare is needed in our city. But where the roads are, it doesn't really lead to a great entrance and exit point. If you've ever been around schools, you know that when you're dropping off or picking up, there can be a significant intensity at those times. And as I mentioned, where proximity of my house is, my concern is, this has been eight years in the making. This has been a long back-and-forth battle between the developers and ourselves. And as others have already stated, they're, they started out as a B-four commercial zoning, didn't get that, and then have kind of came back and forth with some new things that would make it more appealing to businesses that want to buy the property that they already own and need to obviously have filled. So it's kind of been a lot of assumptions that have made, been made over the eight years that neighbors would be happy with. And so that's kind of why we're here today to ask you to deny this amendment. The eight years that we've kind of been going back and forth, of course, I know Councilman Campion is very familiar with this and it has just been a lot of promises made and promises broken. My lot, as I said, is adjacent to one of the potential properties and for eight years, we've had nothing back there except for open land now. And so now we do get the lights into our home and there's been no promises as far as moving forward with what potential fencing could come in and all of that that would happen would, I assume, would be next steps if you approve this because approving the traffic here today, traffic increases can lead to other businesses potentially going into the lots that they did not mention. So they mentioned the daycare and the potential restaurant, but there's also other areas where they did not mention that are still in question. And I guess that the trusting of what promises they are making here today, if they are going to fulfill maybe some promises that they would make to the neighbors, is just a little bit, I guess you could say, of an untrusting relationship with what they are planning. So thank you very much for listening and have a great night.
Thank you. All right, Michelle Savidra.
My name is Michelle Savidra. I live at five-eight-one-zero Manor Court Northwest. I've been with this battle since the start in two thousand and fourteen. And I think where I'm frustrated as a homeowner is that the special district was never something that we anticipated. It was something that was a compromise that was initiated by the developers once they had purchased the lot. And this compromise is something that the envelope just keeps getting pushed further and further. I don't feel as a neighborhood that anybody is keeping the developers accountable to the agreement that was made back in two thousand and seventeen. And that was after a point where every six months, we were coming back up in front of city council, city planning and zoning because they kept trying to tweak the existing ordinance. So they say that they're not building to the square footage capacity that they can and they want to hold to that to make it seem like this project is going to be small. The thing is, is that this is a one-block entrance off of Chateau Road. And by allowing the existing businesses, in addition to the Popeyes that's coming in that will be a drive-through, daycare is a large volume business. You've got people dropping off kids in the morning, you've got people dropping off kids at night, and you're going to have some in the middle. I'm concerned, especially with it being a twelve-hundred-square-foot daycare, how many children are that? And with these trips, by having that in addition to the fast food, where they're trying to plan and just basically sell off all these open lots, we're greatly exceeding the capacity of a city road. This is a neighborhood road. So Villa has two outputs and from this establishment. And yes, they've put in traffic mitigation within the complex, but that traffic mitigation dumps out onto Villa Road, which is just a two-lane city, or sorry, neighborhood road. And then it dumps out into a one-block city road where they have very limited access. So when you have multiple people from a daycare say that they're trying to put into this as an allowable use, you are going to get a large backup. Even though traffic studies seem to be allowable based on what staff has presented, I don't feel that this request to increase the numbers to accommodate current buyers is acceptable in my mind for the neighborhood. It shouldn't be something that continues to allow the developer to keep pushing the envelope. They agreed to a special district. I think they need to up the neighborhood and find uses that work within these envelopes that they created within our ordinance. So I ask you, a city council, to not go through with this, deny their request to increase the traffic allowable trips and to hold them accountable to the deal that they made with the neighborhood. There's no reason why they can't find willing buyers that meet within the envelopes that they defined with the cooperation of the group to get this process finished. Not keep moving the bar up to their advantage and to our disadvantage. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
All right, Chad.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'll be brief as I know we're probably all tired, but I work at Hamilton Real Estate and the principal partner there. And I've worked with the ownership group now for a period of at least two years. And I just wanted to make a very brief comment as to the users and the discussion that's being had this evening. We've spent countless hours working with staff and having diligent conversations related to the users that want to come into this development. This is one of the most popular requests that I get on a regular basis. I deal with a lot of land, sales in town, all over, all over town, aside from it's Fifty-Fifth Street and West Circle Drive, which always come up as really, really demand or high demand locations. So we've worked with the ownership very specifically to make sure that we brought forward to this council users that we felt were reflective of what type of feedback we were getting from the neighborhood and the staff. Very regularly do we get the Starbucks and Caribou's and car washes and all kinds of users that I could go on and on and on about. But it was these users that we felt very specific were good fits for this neighborhood and this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up who would like to speak? Is there anyone on virtually who would like to speak? You use the raise hand function or press star nine? All right, Jeremy Gritner, go ahead, introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
Hey, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hey, this is Jeremy Gritner. I work with Jones Lang LaSalle out of Minneapolis. I am, I represent the tenant at this development that we're talking about for the restaurant user. Just wanted to call out a couple of things. This will be an existing relocation. We cannot share who it is tonight, but would love to and would hope that all the neighborhood and support staff would get behind us here. As it, the reason for this relocation is to incorporate our drive-through. We run a successful business today, but will be more successful in the future. The use is not a fast food use. That was reiterated earlier. In fact, eighty percent of the business is dine-in and twenty percent will be utilizing the drive-through. Our peak hours are very complimentary to a project like this, especially with a neighborhood backing. Peak hours being eight-thirty AM to two PM. This restaurant, I believe, would be a great amendment, a communal restaurant for the neighborhood and the city. I'm happy to answer any further questions should they arise and look forward to hopefully moving this to the next level with my tenant.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? Final call? All right, we will close the public hearing and invite the applicant to provide any rebuttal for up to five minutes.
You know, I understood, there's frustration to all to have this still under development. I understand that it's hard, but I'm just, you know, asked that we go by what the special district says, not by what I remember, what somebody remembers. That's why we put it in writing. You know, there's internal traffic circulation that's designed into this development and so the traffic that can turn off of Chateau Road into the development, circulate and then exit out onto Chateau Road. And as it relates to the traffic study and the different things, you know, everything was factored into that in the traffic study, all the possible scenarios. And so it does, it certainly does account for all those things. It will not be overloaded. I have nothing else, I just ask that you approve. Thank you.
All right, are there, you might be called right back up, so just heads up as we open up for questions. So questions of the applicant or staff, council member Campion?
Yeah, just quickly for staff. I have a couple of questions, but the first one says, "An extension of the special district at sixty-four X seven hundred." And it says, pardon me, my voice is going. "An amendment to the special district may be initiated by the owner of contiguous undeveloped property." When I look at the map, these parcels do not appear to me to be contiguous. So I'm just wondering if, if we can get some read on what is allowed for approaching the council with amendment, whether they have standing to do that.
My initial reaction would be that I would have thought that that language was intended for a large special district where not, where the owner's not the applicant. Think of the arboretum, special district, that sort of thing. That would have been my original thought on the intent of that language. But beyond that, I, as the landowner, feel like this is an appropriate application, but I would have looked to other, to the city attorney or others for an opinion on that. But that's obviously not something that we thought was a reason to not let this application move forward.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the language reads pretty clear to me and I think that I put it in here, I fought for it. Because when you sell off different pieces to different owners, like they have different opinions about what the changes should be. And we run into this case where I think another owner could make a claim that by giving them more trips, you're diluting their trips. So like, there is some standing here for me to say like, are there knock-on effects to other properties that would matter? But honestly, that was kind of something I was reading last night as I was rereading special district for the three-hundredth time. But I think that deserves an answer, if you guys can look at it. And I had a question for the applicant, I just want to make sure we ask that. Can you come back up to the mic? Right, we can, it's open for that? I just, one of the things that always is going to trip people up about the Chateau Special District is the trips, right? Like, we knew this when we made it, you guys advocated for a different standard, and it was that we would use the traffic patterns to, and the trips that are allowed for the site, to govern the intensity of the development. I just want to make sure that you agree with that. Because what I heard earlier is the trips are only about the operational standard. But in this context, and I have the section if you'd like me to read it to you, but in this, in this context, there is also this intensity of the development that follows the trips, correct?
That's right, yeah, it's just the question is, you know, what intensity?
I, and I'm trying to just establish like a common, common ground here.
Yep.
I read that as of today, with the sold-off Popeyes and with the take-five oil change, we're at around twenty-eight trips for AM peak trips. Does that sound right?
We're at, I'm sorry, I don't remember. That there's twenty-eight?
How many, Eric, can you tell me how many peak AM trips do you have or who can do that?
I don't know how many AMP or AM trips there. Are you asking what's still available, what's remaining?
Yep.
I'd have to look at a chart, but.
Okay. And like for my colleagues, the important part here, and I'm not, I'm trying to phrase this as a question and work through it. There are trip allotments that they're allowed. As things fill in, and I'll read the specific language, I'm not paraphrasing, if you feel like I misparaphrase it, you tell me and I'll find it exactly. As things fill in, basically, the remaining trips is decremented. So when we did a comp care, when we did a Firestone, now when we've approved a plan for Popeyes and an oil change, this account of AM peak trips has been dwindled, along with peak PM and ADT. I am interested in what the development team thinks they have left. Because to some degree, that governs how much of the change you're requesting should be reasonable, right? Like, if you don't know, I don't know how we can move forward.
I think your number's about right. I guess I was naive to think that maybe that the special district meant what it said when it said that for trips, you know, for a use or uses that exceed that, you request so that it's in front of the council.
I'm looking for the specific language here. You're going to have to, a request for a use or uses that will exceed the V. So the reason that this is interesting is the gross area was up front and we read to the end of the gross area. But then we say like, "The size and intensity of allowable uses noted in subdivision three of this section is limited by the approved traffic study impact report." So like, that very necessary next phrase was left out of the description. And like, that's the, this is where I'm trying to get to is, I actually think, despite some of my neighbors saying otherwise, I might like to see a daycare there. Like, I think that that is kind of, that would meet the criteria that I wrote down, which is, it's a neighborhood-compatible use. When the other one is described as a relocation to incorporate a drive-through, I'm a little bit more challenged to find that that meets the language. So just interested in your perspective, like, how does relocating a drive-through to this site improve the neighborhood compatibility?
So when you say relocating a drive-through, because there's.
Sorry, that was the person on the phone described. I thought it was from the development team.
Oh, so they're saying they're relocating their, their business, their current business that they operate in Rochester, they're reloading, relocating it to a new site, a site that allows for drive-throughs?
Right. And I guess I'm asking, you said, your first statement was, "These are neighborhood-compatible changes." Like, how does that relocation?
How does?
How does that make it neighborhood-compatible?
Well, it's compatible in the sense that there's four allowed and we have two. You know, so, I mean, these were written into that special district. I understand what you're saying.
I don't, yeah, I guess like that is the line of thinking I'm trying to get on and I wanted to address it with you while the meeting was open.
The use, the use is a great neighborhood use. The use requires a, a drive-through. That's my opinion, obviously.
Okay, I'm going to leave it there.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I'm not sure if, I think Councilmember Campion has a lot more history loaded up. To me, I mean, what I've seen. To me, I mean, what I've seen here is that in twenty seventeen, we did a traffic study. And I think the the team making the request to us says, well, the roads can handle this now, so we should do it that way. And I, I guess I need some convincing that this really wasn't done as part of the special district as a form of zoning control, that we were using the trips not just as what the roads could handle, but as a way of controlling what could be done in the special district. Do you think I'm understanding that wrong?
No, there was, there was certainly, and there was certainly an intention for intensity, not low intensity. But but very clearly was written, there was not an exception for eighty-one thousand feet. There was not an exception for anything. But it says, you know, for a use that exceeds the current traffic study that you would get to, you know, you have that application to.
I guess I'm still missing it, because when you use traffic study, it's almost like Public Works said this is what the roads go handle. So so then we go right to the special district and say, change it. I I'm saying that I'm of the impression that's not how it was done. But when you use traffic study, you make it sound like, no, we didn't, we didn't view it that way. And I'm trying to, it's key to me on whether these trips are a part of a method of zoning in the special district or it really had to do with what the roads could handle and it really wasn't any sort of method of controlling, and I hate using these words, but intensity, and we don't have a real definition of it. But clearly, the trips control how how much activity is going to be in a R one adjacent business park.
Yeah, so the reality is the traffic study, we don't know what the, I mean, we know that it could handle at least what was proposed in the traffic study. It might handle more. We didn't go to seek the maximum. The traffic study that you have as, that's that's there now is proposing things that will not be there. It won't be to the intensity that that traffic study even says.
Yeah, I I agree with you on that. I I I'm still caught up with that. We weren't waiting to change the special district until we got the traffic study. This trap, special district was set up based on using these numbers as a way of controlling the special district. It wasn't waiting for the traffic study to come in. I I get the impression that's a contradiction I'm hearing from the two teams. You're viewing it as, we have a traffic study, we're not going to go near the top of it, but we want this to be now part of the special district. And I I guess I don't know why you would have entered into the agreement for the special district without thinking, oh, the these are hard numbers. This is what we're going to be held to.
We would not have entered this, if 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 we didn't have that phrase, for a use that exceeds this, you come back to council. You know, to, then we, it would be something that we couldn't have done at the time.
Okay, that, again, I'm I'm struggling with this.
I'm not understanding your question, maybe, so.
Well, I I, again, my my take is, I I get, again, I I get the impression, I could have it wrong, that you, your view is that we're we're going to change, we we want to change the special district because the roads now say they can handle it. As if, as if the the trips had nothing to do with the development of the special district. And that's, that's a, that's a disconnect to me.
Yeah, so, I mean, the the trips, the traffic study is a mechanism to get the uses that actually are are good for this. Because there's a number of different things. For example, the, you know, the the restaurant that's that's there and the daycare. The traffic study is a means to get those.
I think we're gonna move on.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I'm not.
Yeah, staff, do you want to add anything?
Well, I would just add.
Clarification?
If okay, I'd like to add a comment to this discussion. So the the section of the ordinance that you guys are talking about, again, I think you guys have read it. But a request for a use or uses that will exceed the vehicle trip limitation of the approved traffic study dated, et cetera, shall require an amendment to the traffic study and must be approved by city council and public works. So I wasn't in this discussion, and I think we're all guessing at this point of what everybody in the room felt. But from a staff side of things, what, how I would read this is that it was sort of determined that anything that meets that traffic study is a staff level approval, almost like what we would see as a type one. And anything that exceeds that level of traffic needs to be a type three that comes back through city council. So I'm not sure that it was in there as you can never change this. To me, it's saying, there was, there was a thought of to change it, and to change it, you have to come back to you guys.
It's already been increased three times. I mean, it's right in the text of the district, right? There's a three supplements.
Sure.
All right, councilmember Palmer has the floor.
I got some questions for the staff. I'm a little. What we're here to do today is 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 add another use to this special district. Is that not correct?
And change the governing traffic study. You're adding a use and you're changing the traffic study that allows the trip limitation from twenty fourteen, I think it was, to twenty seventeen.
And and it meets the traffic study?
Yes, it has been approved by the city engineer.
Okay. Next year, we have a business that's going to go on there and change the use. We no longer have a special district. What governs it?
The UDC.
What part of the UDC? What was it?
MXN.
Okay, in in what, I mean, would anything be able to go on there then?
Anything, yes, but these uses that we're talking about today would not be able to go in the MXN district, mostly because of the size. For the daycare specifically, MXN has a maximum square footage of five thousand square feet for non-residential uses. So this is sort of the opportunity to do the daycare. Otherwise, they would have to come back with a zone change in the, in the UDC to a different zoning district other than MXN.
Is there one way into this commercial area or more than one?
There's more than one.
Okay, thank you.
And council, council president Carlson, can I just provide a response to councilmember campaign's question from earlier?
Yes.
No? Okay. So we we looked into the special district, councilmember campaign. The section you're referring to is specifically, sorry, now I gotta pull it back up, is specifically titled, extension of the special district. So by our read, that that section is to be followed if they're looking to make the special district larger, not just amend it. And so amendment of the special district follows sixty-one, one forty-eight, which is the conditional use permit process, which is the process that we follow tonight.
So I'm sorry, just to clarify, there are criteria at the the top that establish this, the Chateau Special District that state the determination needed for the creation of a special district? Your argument is that that is not applicable?
No, so in that top section, after all, it lists all the numbers. It says, when a special district ordinance does not specify the procedure or criteria to amend the approved site development plan, the proposed amendment will be reviewed under section sixty-one, one forty-eight. And that has been the interpretation of how we've amended this every time that amendment for this section has come forward.
Sorry.
The other section that you were referring to lower down in the special district is head, is titled, extension of the special district. And we would read that to me that that's if the special district were to expand beyond just these lots.
Sorry, like, this is gonna get super technical, but subdivision six says, staff authorized changes may be permitted in accordance with the standard set forth in sixty-one, one forty-eight.
Yeah, so this is where it gets confusing, because there was a text amendment after the fact that flipped sixty-one, one forty-eight and sixty-one, one forty-six. So that's just never been updated. I know that the intent was for it to be sixty-one, one forty-six, which is the council level conditional use permit. Yeah. And that happened after the Hilton Hotel, what the staff authorized changes in two thousand, whatever that was.
So I should be looking at section sixty-one, one four-six. I just wanted to be clear. All right.
All right, councilmember Bransford.
Oh.
I think you're up.
Could I, I'd like to ask the developers a question. And this is really just, this is based on an email I got or some conversations I got from the neighborhood. So I don't even know if it's true, and I'm just curious what your response to it is. But is this drive through going to be double wide, like, so that two cars at once can go through?
I would have to defer to the, the, I don't know if, is he still on, is Jeremy still on?
I mean, I, you know, you don't need to say who it is. I'm just curious how wide the drive through is.
Yeah, I think it's, if it's similar to the other one that's in town, it's a single lane.
It's a single lane?
Yes.
Okay. If if there's any way to find out for sure, I'd like to know. You could, you could also condition that as a requirement. Okay. Yeah, that's a little concerning if it's double wide. I wouldn't want to look at two streams go by. Thank you.
All right, councilmember Dennis.
All right, thank you. So everyone's background is different. Mine's in education, so zoning's not my forte. And so to, in, in, like, more plain English, I think a huge concern, I've been reading in the emails that have been sent to council from concerned residents, is protecting our neighborhood and making sure there's a guarantee and accountability. If if we denied this tonight, and it came, would, it would come back probably with the UDC. I mean, it's, you know, development wants to develop. And which would be more protection for the neighbors? Would it be doing this right now? Would there be guarantees in the wording that they have to do exactly what they said? They have to do the daycare, they have to do this, this, you know, proposal? Or would it be more protection for the neighbors to have them come back under the UDC and have them have to change zoning to put the daycare in?
Yeah, so this, this is where it's gonna get, sorry, this is where it's gonna get a little complicated. If you're asking me what has more protection, there's value to me in knowing what the projects are coming forward. So I think as a council, you've got to decide, are we comfortable with a daycare and a fast food restaurant with a mixed use office building? It's fast food and an office. Or not? And if the answer is no, then you should deny this. If the answer is yes, and you want to tie it down to those exact uses, yes, you have the ability to do that through the special district. And I have a motion that could do that, that you could choose to make. There's all sorts of variables within that. But if you're looking to lock it down to to those exact things, yes, we can do that under the special district. If you don't do that, and you're saying what has more protection, this significantly changes in the UDC. You won't see these two same projects come forward unless there's a zone change. What you'll likely see is subdivision of this land to smaller lots because of the five thousand square foot maximum. So it will be different, it will look entirely different than what we're talking about here tonight if it goes forward under the UDC. Will it be more protection? I think you could argue it one way or the other. But.
For trip, trip wise and intensity wise, I guess I'm just, we don't have the UDC right now, so I can't like.
So trips are based on uses, so that's too broad of a question to really answer. But I will say to cap it at five thousand square feet will be a smaller number of trips. But you take one of those lots and split it in half, and now there's two buildings. So I don't know if it would be more trips or less trips without knowing exactly what the uses are.
Okay, um, okay. And then my my, my other question is, I appreciate the developer for for coming on the weekends and and talking. I I heard from, you know, I I heard the names of what was going in from the developer when we spoke over Zoom. Thank you. Is, are they not supposed to be disclosed of what businesses are gonna be? Because I hear now, the the caller was saying, you know, fast food. I heard the name of the the proposed, which which influences my vote, obviously, if I know what is the exact name of the restaurants coming in. So is this something that we can't share with the public? Or is it something, I mean, I'm just curious, because I, I mean, I have that information, I feel like.
Yeah, that's a huge issue. I mean, as your colleague, you cannot let the, what they say is going to be the restaurant influence your vote.
Well, see, and that's, that's hard, because, I mean, how the, how can it not influence your vote if you say a difference between, you know, like, you can pick restaurants, right?
So I will say, legally, we can say the name out loud. It's, they have had a public, they have had a pre-development meeting that has shown the name, so I know what the name is. That being said, the applicant has respectfully requested that we don't share the name because it isn't in-town business and there's employee considerations that haven't been shared. So they would prefer to keep the name confidential. That being said, I'm fully confident that the restaurant we're talking about is the restaurant that's moving forward because we do have a pre-development packet with that restaurant in there. So is it possible, to councilmember campaign's point, is it possible that a different restaurant could go in there? Sure, it is. But but they would have, this is where it gets all tricky. They would have two months to find a different user, because in two months, the UDC kicks in and this all, this whole thing goes away. And so, and then the heightened neighborhood protection of the UDC kicks in and the less square footage and all that. So they would, they they have two, two months to get that user in there. So it's a judgment call at the end of the day that you have to make of, are you confident in that or not? And and so you can take that for what it's worth.
Okay, I I just, I want to say for the record, though, you know, what goes in these spots are dramatically different. And that's how people lobby or try to convince councilmembers is by saying, you know, what restaurant? And then, you know, telling what kind of, you know, trips and what kind of people. So I I do feel that this is kind of a slippery slope with transparency, but thank you.
We have a lot of other questions still, all right? Because we're, I still have a long list. So councilmember Kirkpatrick, you have questions or discussion? All right, councilmember campaign, you have questions or discussions?
I'm hoping staff can put up the language that they hinted that they have about alternative motions.
Are we in motions yet or?
Well.
Palmer still had a question?
I I'm, I'm just want to clarify on on what Ms. Dennis was saying. If they put a restaurant in, and two years later, they go out of business, they put another restaurant in, as long as they don't change the use, they don't need to come to zoning.
Correct. So once the use is established, it could change to a different use or a different owner.
Different owner, as long as the use stays the same.
Yes. I think what councilmember Dennis was getting at is the owner, the the tenant name that we're talking about, she's worried would that change between this discussion and what actually gets built there. But in the future, that could change over. You're absolutely right. Councilmember campaign, if you want me to put the language up, I just need a hint at which flavor of language you would like, because there's a lot of different options.
Yeah, the second one would be, I mean, I'm, I'm, if we're ready to move on, I'm happy to.
I think we're good on questions?
Sure. So.
Well, you said pass.
Well, I, I should, well, I meant pass, go to others.
All right, councilmember Kirkpatrick, before we put the motion up.
Thank you. What does a neighborhood want? What did they say when you asked them?
Yeah, come on up.
I think that's a better question for the neighbors. I mean, we haven't had, honestly, a a lot of support for many of the things that we brought forward from the neighbors. And so, you know, we've, I I, that's the best I can say, so.
So you, you didn't ask them what they, what they would like to see there, just to get their feedback?
Obviously, yeah, we've we've had a lot of neighborhood meetings and and, you know, I think the reality of what somebody might want and what is, you know, what somebody's in the market to buy, you know, as far as what, you know, what people are coming forward, don't really match up, you know, and so I, we haven't found a lot of support, even for things that that I think in hindsight, they thought were good. You know, there was enough details that they, they talked with that sent the businesses that were coming that would have been good potentially away. So I, I can't answer that directly, other than the fact that we have, we've had had meetings. They would like, you know, I mean, they'd probably like dental offices and and things like that. That would be great if we could, if if those are the types of people that were asking to buy.
So I think, I guess what I hear you saying is that they've actually given you feedback as to what they want. And the only thing I've heard you say is a dental office, when I asked you the question specifically, what has the neighborhood said that they want?
Right.
I only hear you offering one option of a dental office. And then the other thing I hear you saying is that there was incompatibility with what the neighborhood said they wanted. How many orders are for the income that might be coming in from folks that would be interested in purchasing the property?
Yeah, I think the special district is what we lean on to govern what we can do.
I I'm not, I'm not asking about governing or anything. I'm just simply, as as a person who lives in a neighborhood and a lot might sell next to me, and the developer might meet with me and they might ask, hey, what would you guys like to see here? And the neighbor's hands would go up and say, well, we'd like this, or we'd like this. And and that's what I'm asking. What has the neighborhood said that they would like there?
Yeah, that's.
And you, there's no answer?
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure there's many answers, but.
But you don't have them with you on a list right now?
They have them with me on this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we done with questions? All right. Councilmember campaign asked to show a motion that he had pre-drafted with Mr. Yetser.
Yeah, I, as I reviewed the packet, you know, I found that the proposed amendment just didn't support the intent of the special district. And specifically, I think the requested changes would produce elements that are not neighborhood compatible. And so stepping back, I said to myself, I don't really like the idea of changing the trips. That has been in place for a long time and has been something the neighbor, the neighbors hold dear about governing. Trips can happen. But at the same time, like, we have to have a broader view, a little bit of, this daycare is a necessary use. So what I asked staff to do was to draft ordinance or draft amendment language that allow us to specify which lot, what size, and to exempt a daycare from PKM trip limits. With the idea being, the applicant can go forward and make this part of the property whole. I think in terms of the rest of the sites, what I've heard is, we're adding a restaurant and we're adding a drive through, things that we put the limits in place to govern. Like, that was why those limits were there. So I I find it hard to swallow the idea that, just give us some more trips so we can put in a a restaurant with a drive through, because drive throughs. Because drive-throughs kind of inherently aren't a walkable, neighborhood-compatible use. I think that there's a lot to do there, so the draft, staff drafted it, I'll have them.
Just to clarify, you want just the daycare?
Yeah.
Okay.
While you're pulling that up, uh, just a quick comment to those online who have their hands raised, we're not taking any comments at this time.
Public.
Public comments.
Closed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the public hearing has been closed.
Do you want me to speak to it, or did you wanna?
Sure, I can speak to it.
I don't wanna be accusing you of hand-waving, so.
Yeah, so this just, this just does exactly what Councilmember Campion said. Like I said, there's a lot of flexibility here because it's a special district on how you wanna handle this. So this allows, adds the daycare, locks it down to only that lot, and exempts the issue that they have with trips in the AM, just on that lot.
So point of order, has this, this amendment been?
Asked the city attorney for his advice. My, my desire is to ratify this in place of the applicant's language. Is the motion to move the language on the screen, or to amend what they have?
I would suggest moving the language on the screen.
I will move the language, uh, as written on the screen.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Campion?
I kinda set it up pretty well, so I'm gonna just leave it there.
All right, other discussion?
Yeah, I, I, again, I like this sort of, um, I, I think the, one of the issues I had is that when you look at special districts, it's a form of zoning. And if zoning was in conflict with something like improving our daycare facilities, this is a good way to get around that. So, um, I, I'm, again, I'm just trying to absorb it all here, but I think I can support this as written. I, I really came here uncomfortable with the idea of the traffic study being driven by a public works, um, roads capability. I thought this, I thought the trips was really baked into the design of the special district, and I, that's why I was struggling with how to approve that. So this is, uh, more palatable.
Other comments? Councilmember Dennis?
So can I see that, that motion one more time? I, I, I feel there needs to be a size limitation, I, did I, did I not see that on the daycare?
Sorry, give me just one second, please.
Okay, I'm so sorry, yeah. Cause I mean, daycares can be of all varieties, so, um.
I think there is a size limit on it.
Twelve thousand. Was there on this, or I'm sorry, I must have missed it, I just wanna make sure that.
So in case it's unclear, that is contained in the motion, I mean.
Oh, that's twelve thousand square feet. Okay, oh, okay, I'm so sorry, yes, okay, that's, that was my clarification, okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
I don't, I don't know if this has any bearing on anything, but is this kind of a one-sided development or two-sided? Or, I mean, are we gonna have traffic on the back side, on the north side against that road that's residential? Is there a way to keep this one-sided so that there's only traffic on the front, the 55th Street side?
It's obligated to meet all of the design standards of the Chateau Circle as it's written, so.
Hey.
It should.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Everything else in the special district stays in place except for these modifications. Adding daycare at that size, up to that size, and then amending the trip limitations for AM trips, right?
Correct, AMP trips, yeah.
Sorry, when I added the other thing, I took that part out.
So, well, that's the only place they needed to be amended in order to accommodate the daycare. Correct? Yeah, so, go ahead, Councilmember Palmer.
So what, what does that leave them for the other lot? Mr. Campion?
Well, based on the math I have, I feel cautious about saying anything, cause they couldn't provide numbers either. But it looks like 30 AM trips, uh, give or take 200 PPM, and give or take 3,000 average daily trips. So it's exactly the same position they were when they sold off the lots that took up all the trips that they had.
So that leaves them with 3,000 total trips for that one lot?
Excuse me, no, I didn't subtract the daycare. That was where they were starting, so the daycare PPM of 129 and ADT of 552 would come off. But ultimately, still better than they would be if they had to actually get the trips.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Keen?
I, I guess I had thought through the same thing, and I, I, my take would be is the, the, it, look at the timeline that we're on right now. And I think you're not gonna be developing this under the special district. This is gonna be developed under the UDC, and it's gonna be a very different place. So I don't think the trips will come to bear. I, I could be wrong, maybe something's gonna happen quickly in the next four months. But my understanding of how these timelines work, the, by the time there's another plan for these, these lots, it's going to be under the control of the UDC. Go ahead, Seth.
Agreed completely, so I just wanna make sure the council understands what, what they're saying there, that there's two lots undeveloped. So there was a point made during the public hearing that there are several lots, more than just these two, that are up for question. We have active applications that can meet the traffic limitations for all of the remaining lots except these two. So by dealing with one of the two lots, you're leaving one lot undeveloped, which will likely, it's not as if that's gonna stay undeveloped forever. It will likely develop under the UDC. So the trip thing, that now they have no room to work with, will solve itself. But I'm just saying, just know that it will look different than what you're looking at here tonight. So I just wanna make sure everybody understands that.
I would just quickly say that I'm thrilled that there is a daycare proposed. This is connected to every other thing we're working on as a city related to economic development and workforce support and equity. It's just absolutely foundational, uh, need in our community. So I'm, I'm really supportive of adding the daycare and specifically adapting the special district to accommodate that use. Councilmember Palmer? Oh, I thought you had a comment. Others? All right, do you want, do we wanna vote?
Before the, the amendment?
On the amendment, but it, it, it is the motion.
Held it, you were right and I was wrong, it is technically an amendment.
It's amendment to the special district.
Yeah.
But if we vote on this, we have dispensed of this business item. I mean, if it passes. If it doesn't pass, we still could have a, an additional motion on the table.
Correct?
Yeah.
That's correct.
So can I have a question then, before we vote then? Okay, so then it has to be a daycare for, forever, you know, is that like how it's gonna be? Or can they, can they build it and then a better offer comes in, or? I'm just, I'm clarifying, I'm just not, I just wanna make sure that.
Well, you threw out a couple of different scenarios there. It doesn't have to be a daycare forever. When the UDC comes in, it could hypothetically redevelop to something that conforms under the UDC. But over the next two months, if they're gonna build something there, it must be a daycare, yes. And if they're not, if they don't build a daycare, then whatever does get built there will have to conform to the UDC of MXN zoning district.
So they have to build within the next two months, like this?
They have to get a development application submitted, yes.
Okay, yeah, I just, I've, I've heard, obviously, in emails and things that, that, you know, there's, there's some trust issues going on with, with things not always coming through as, you know. So I'm, I'm just, I just wanna make sure it's ironclad that, you know, I'm a big supporter of, of daycares. It's, you know, very, very needed in our world. But this, this situation, yeah, we've, we've done this with many neighborhoods, uh, where we, we were rezoning. And it's one thing to have, um, your property next to a vacant lot, where you're like, well, something's gonna be built. To my understanding, houses were taken down, like, people didn't buy their house next to a vacant lot. It, it turned, you know, their life, their lives are being turned upside down with, with this. And I, I'm just really nervous that it's not gonna hold through to exactly what is being promised, so I just.
Yeah, so a couple, a couple of things. This is professionally, my opinion, the safest way to do this, to guarantee that a daycare gets built there, or nothing large, right? Cause if they wait too long, then they, they won't be able to build something large. The other thing that I wanna correct on what you just said there, the lot that we're talking about here, Lot 2, Block 1 of Chateau 3rd does not share a lot line with a single-family home.
Oh, right, yeah, I've, I've, I've discussed a lot of the details with the developers about, you know, green space and driving. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it if, if, golly, if it's guaranteed.
All right, are we ready to vote? Okay, so again, we are voting on this amendment to the special district. If this passes, we've dispensed of the business item. If it fails, we would have the opportunity to consider a different motion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Abstaining.
Okay, motion carries six, zero, with Councilmember Palmer abstaining. So Yetser, I'm gonna turn it over to you quickly, I think you have, uh, an acknowledgement to make, and then we will, uh, make another announcement and take a break.
Thank you, I'm, I'm glad you reminded me. Um, I just wanted to take a second and let the council know that, uh, Emma Miller Shindalar, who's on, uh, on this meeting, this is Emma's final meeting with the City of Rochester, so, um, we don't always call out, uh, our staffing updates, but given that she's one that works fairly closely with the council, we wanted to let, let you guys know, um, Emma's been a critical team member from the beginning, she's been here since the start of community development, and she quickly caught on and, and has done some great work for us. Um, obviously, she was integral to the unified development code process, couldn't have done that work without her. Some other things that, you know, obviously, the development applications in front of you guys and the connectivity index were some of the great things that she worked on. And so, uh, just wanted to give her a little shout out and, and thank her for her serving the City of Rochester, and best of luck on the next adventure, thanks.
Absolutely, thank you so much, Emma. We'll miss you, you were a wonderful asset to the community and the city, and I wish you the very best on your next adventure. Not to put you on the spot, but thank you. All right, so we are going to, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion to suspend the rules, and then a motion to allow for the, um, public hearing G10 to occur after our deadline, which was 10:15.
So moved.
Move to suspend the rules, second.
All right.
Anything?
All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, and then a motion to allow for G10, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Am I doing it wrong?
Special, the, yeah, the dropping of the rules is implied to do that.
Yeah.
I think it was implied.
We don't need the second motion?
I think so.
We just made it.
Break? Uh, can we take a five-minute break? Okay, all right, we'll see you all back at 11:20, item G10. All right, we are back, back, uh, calling us back to order.
Recording in progress.
All right, we are moving on to public hearing G10, the annual rural service district review, and Allison Sosa's gonna run us through this one.
Yes, thank you, good evening, Council President Carlson, Mayor Norton, members of the City Council. I am Allison Sosa with the Community Development Department, and I will be facilitating the Rural Service District Review tonight. The Rochester Quot of Ordinances requires an annual review of the urban and rural service property tax districts within the City of Rochester. Properties classified as a rural service district are largely undeveloped and do not make use of many of the municipal services. Therefore, rural service properties pay a reduced municipal tax rate. Um, and to qualify for the Rural Service District classification, a property must fulfill four criteria. It must be rural in character, not developed with commercial, industrial, um, or urban residential purposes. Must not be part of a consolidated area over five acres in size. Um, and be either unused or used for agricultural, forest, recreational, nursery, or quarrying purposes. The list A for 2023 includes one new removal for this, for this year for a parcel which is smaller than five acres in size. The community development team is recommending approval of the 2023 Rural Service District Parcels List, which is attached to the agenda packet.
All right, thank you, uh, we'll open the public hearing, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? If you are joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Last call, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing.
Approval. Second.
Councilmember Campion?
Looks good.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Sosa. All right, we are moving on to our report and recommendation, and tonight we are looking at the DMC, uh, budget. And then I will turn it over to Ms. Steinhauser and Mr. Sieb, when he is available, to introduce the item and say more about it.
Give me a minute here to connect. Sorry. Geez, Cindy.
Although, maybe it's gone so well otherwise, sorry. Thank you, Cindy Steinhauser, Deputy C. Administrator for Development Services Infrastructure.
I am here with Patrick Sieb, who will kick off the presentation, and it's gonna be a joint effort for us to share with you the proposed DMC funding request for 2023.
Patrick?
Thank you, um, Council President, Mayor, and members of the City Council, it's a pleasure to be with you again. Each year, we come before you, um, to present the Destination Medical Center, uh, funding request. My name is Patrick Sieb, I'm Executive Director of DMC EDA, and I'm here on behalf of DMCC. Um, as Cindy said, we will, um, share this presentation as we, uh, fully developed this budget together over the past, um, six or eight months. Today's discussion is, uh, each year, we present the, uh, capital budget and operating budgets, and request your, um, advancement of a resolution from DMC. Just a few key takeaways, um, the capital improvement program, and you're gonna recognize everything in the capital improvement program, some of which are projects that we are finishing, projects that have been approved in the past, and that, that we are finishing. You're gonna see projects that are underway, that have been approved by this body, that are, uh, midstream, like Rapid Transit. And then there are projects that are emerging, um, as, as city priorities. Soldier Field and, um, Sixth Street and the Riverfront Connection. And then we do have a, um, a placeholder that starts to talk about projects on the horizon. Projects that have not been fully developed conceptually, but they are projects that are emerging as community conversations. Within the operating and, and work plan budget, um, you're going to see that there is additional capacity built into our operating budget for a significant, um, additional function around business development and lead generation. I'll talk about that a bit. There are resources, um, in our budget to support the values that DMCC has expressed around advancing equity, sustainability, affordability, community engagement, and health. And so our, uh, operating budget includes, uh, programs, uh, related to that. And then there is capacity building within the City of Rochester. So there are already, um, six staff that are supported by DMC, six city, uh, project management staff. And this budget, um, um, adds additional capacity as we enter into more of an execution phase of DMC. So those are some sort of high-level, uh, what you can expect to see in this presentation. The funding request process really begins, our process really begins in February, when we have the joint meetings between DMC, City Council, the county, and DMC EDA, where, uh, lots of conversations take place. There is, uh, working sessions throughout the summer involving, um, staff from the city and DMC, as well as volunteers from the EDA and DMCC. And then in front of DMCC in September for its action and consideration, and then today in front of City Council. We have a logic model that we use, and again, this should look very familiar to, familiar to you. We, um, have a set of, uh, overriding goals and targets. We have a set of guiding principles that, um, guide our work and our thinking and our values. We have a set of priorities that have been established and, and publicly discussed. And that gets translated into a set of annual commitments, uh, for capital and operating. Cindy?
Thanks, Patrick. And laying alongside of that is your strategic priorities. And so again, as we go through this process and we try to create alignment, we wanna align not only with the city's vision and the organization vision, but it comes all the way down to the action plan and your strategic priorities that you've adopted. And I think what you'll see, again, in this year's budget, is that we took, um, a, a real hard look at the three strategic priorities, and have been able to create. at the three strategic priorities and have been able to create alignment between not only the template that DMC uses to make recommendations, but then what actually translates into actual projects. And specifically, thinking about your action plan, there are five areas, five goals, identified in the action plan that align very nicely with what's being proposed in the 2023. They're both, they live under the buckets of economic vibrancy and growth management, as well as your strategic priority of affordable living, and they're everything from, you know, Chateau Theater to Discovery Walk to infrastructure improvements, to economic development and equity issues around prevailing wage. Patrick mentions Rapid Transit. There's also space into the rental housing and affordable housing, as well as development opportunities with West Transit Village. So again, really thinking about what's the lens in which we looked into developing this budget and creating alignment and unity with your strategic priorities were critical to the thinking of this development budget.
As I have tried to simplify the work of DMC, really gets reduced to two things. One is to steward the $585 million of public funds that have been pledged to this initiative, steward those resources over time, and then proactively recruiting and attracting new businesses and new investment to Rochester. So two sides of the coin, providing the public infrastructure that enables growth and then proactively seeking growth. With respect to the capital budget that we're proposing, it is, the column that's in orange in 2023 is the budget that we're looking at, and we are not asking you to approve the years beyond 2023. And I do wanna just make one thing clear because it has come up and there's been some confusion around what's referred to as Heart of the City Phase Two. And I just wanna clarify that and take responsibility for some of that confusion. There is nothing in this budget today that relates to Heart of the City Phase Two. Heart of the City Phase Two would emerge should that become a priority for this body and for DMCC. But it is not in front of you for action today or for consideration today. So just wanna make that clear. Certainly has been talked about, the idea of connecting the front door of Male Civic Center to the downtown via First Avenue and from the Peace Plaza to the Gonda Building to the west. So it's not in this budget for action. I just wanna clarify, talk to a couple of you about that, but I want to just be publicly on the record about that. So Cindy will describe each of these categories in a bit more detail.
As if this wasn't so easy to read, right, this slide? So we're gonna give you a visual, let me move this, because this appears to be. There we go. This is a visual representation of what we're talking about in terms of the 2023 proposed budget. And as you can see in the green areas, we're showing investment across different types of projects, from Rapid Transit to development, to cultural investment, both at Chateau Theater and Soldier Field, riverfront development, infrastructure improvements with sanitary sewer streets, and of course, Sixth Street Bridge, Sixth Street Complete Street. So a very comprehensive, holistic approach to using these dollars to leverage where there is already really great initiatives taking place. And we've bucketed them under five key areas in the DMC budget. So the first area would be what we call public realm. And this is where we have both projects that are nearing completion, as well as new that are on the horizon and ones that we're preparing for. So we have not quite $14 million in this public realm bucket, which includes not only Discovery Walk, but Chateau Theater, discussions around DMC's very significant contribution to Soldier Field improvements, as well as continuing to advance riverfront development in the couple of areas where you have adopted small area plan work. The next area is around mobility. Obviously, the biggest investment that you'll continue to see this year is around the Link Rapid Transit, but also some physical improvement along the Second Street Southwest with reconstruction. Strategic development, this is our opportunity to leverage dollars to grow that private investment. And so in this category, we have about $3 million budgeted. And as you can see, there's, we're always in conversation, particularly DMC in conversation, with private sector opportunities that come our way. And this is the bucket of funding that we would use to try and leverage and do some of that recruitment related to advancing private investments in the district. And then we have other infrastructure, sorry, I'm gonna keep moving this, including streets and sewers. It should not go with, without saying, just because you can't see it doesn't mean there isn't dollars being put towards it. And the sanitary sewer improvements that we're seeing with DMC dollars, as well as continuing to advance, it says Sixth Street Bridge, but again, I want to remind everybody, it's not just Sixth Street Bridge. That project is Sixth Street Complete Streets. It does neighborhood safety improvements where it signalizes and protects up to eight stops where there's only one signaling or one controlled intersection at this point. It also has improved riverfront connectivity and ADA access, as well as obviously the Sixth Street Bridge, which has been mentioned many times. And then as we think about this, you know, we don't want to do this planning in a vacuum. We want to always be thinking about how did what we're planning for in 2023 advance work that we might be considering in '24 and '25. As Patrick said, no decisions on Heart of the City Phase Two, so apologies for any confusion that that may have led in the public. I will also own that. But do want to be thinking about, and we're in active conversation with city teammates and our partners, talking about what is on the horizon in terms of city projects. We've had a number of meetings. We have a meeting again this week to just think about readiness. And readiness comes, we look through it from a variety of lenses, not only financial, but regulatory, where there is private momentum happening that would want to inform investment in '24 and beyond. So while we're focused on 2023, we're already in conversations about how we put, how we prepare for the '24, '25 budget year, which you'll be starting in a matter of months.
Yep, so just to wrap up this portion of the budget presentation, which relates to capital. If you look at, yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that.
If you look at a framework that was adopted in 2020 when we did the five-year update to the development plan, we anticipated roughly $200 million plus or minus that would be used for public infrastructure during the five years of 2020 to 2024. And you can see in the column on the right where we are landing largely against what has been approved in the past and what's before you. So you can see that we are generally falling within the realm of the expectation that was set out as a set of guardrails, if you will, in terms of how we would frame our budget in each of the years. So, Council President, we can pause here to respond to questions about capital budget, or we could continue on and finish the operating budget presentation.
Let's just go ahead and finish.
So with that enthusiasm, I'll move to the operations. The second part of our budget presentation relates to the operating budget. There are four elements to the operating budget. There are the DMCC corporate expenses, there's the DMC EDA operating budget, there is the City of Rochester administrative support, a very modest amount, and then there are the DMC city project management expenses. Those are the staff, city staff, that support the execution of DMC initiatives and DMC projects. Within the state statute that defines DMC, it also outlines and defines the work of the EDA. And so our work is guided by state law. It really falls into three buckets, development, marketing, and planning and promotion. That is to say, attracting investment, attracting, telling the story of Rochester outside this market. It is around development services, supporting and underwriting development proposals, seeking grants and so forth, and then outreach and communications to ensure that we are staying connected to the community and participating in community initiatives. We have a more formal presentation that I think we would like to spend some time with City Council on, probably outside the context of this particular meeting, to describe the work we're doing around business recruitment and development. And we are at a stage in, I think, DMC's evolution where we are ready to commit significant time, effort, and resources into the work of attracting new companies to Rochester. And we have retained staff, brought in staff to help build out the program. What I'm reflecting on the screen here is an outline that our staff has developed in terms of what is our pathway, where are we at today, what is the work we need to be doing in the future? How do we distribute the amount of our resources around awareness building? That is, letting the market know, the market outside of Rochester know about opportunities here, direct lead generation, research and data, understanding what people are looking for in a city, and the project management work that goes on once you attract a potential lead to our community. I think this is a meaningful presentation that could be part of a, perhaps, a City Council study session or a more in-depth discussion around how we rally our community around this effort. Because this is not a one organization or one person kind of effort. It really requires the community, the team of Rochester, to work together on this. But we are developing the program of what that would look like. As a part of the resolution and action before you are working capital loan provisions that have been as part of sort of the cash flow management process. And so that's been sort of a standard part of the way in which we move funds between organizations. So just wrapping up, key takeaways, this should all be very familiar turf to you. This is all things that you've been talking about, that you've identified as priorities that aligns with what DMCC believes as shared priorities. And we really want to reflect that we are finishing some projects that have been long underway. We're advancing projects that you have discussed and unanimously supported, such as Rapid Transit. And we are introducing new items that are ready to move forward, like Soldier Field and Sixth Street Bridge. And when I say Sixth Street Bridge, and when Cindy says Sixth Street Bridge, we fully understand we're at the very early stages of understanding what Sixth Street Bridge might look like and how it might function. So the action today is around committing the design resources so that decisions can be made ultimately what that connection will look like. And then, again, giving visibility to projects on the horizon. So with that, prepare to respond to any questions.
All right, thank you for that. I didn't mean to lack enthusiasm. Yeah, so Councilmember Key, and then clarification on the exact motion.
Okay. Yeah, again, going through this for a couple of times now, I feel for my newer council members who are seeing this like for a second time. I think there's a lot to absorb and it's hard to do. But because I've been through it enough, I can kind of see, watch for the changes. And I like that you showed us your key takeaways twice. And mainly because I was watching this sort of like, there's the Discovery, there's the Rapid Transit, which is a huge project. But I saw something that I consider a shift in DMC priorities when I look and say, ready for action, Soldier Field and Sixth Street. I really get the impression you're hearing some of the concerns from the city talking about, when are we gonna be doing more investment for the community? Now, I don't share all those, but I was, I read some of this as that you are hearing us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember.
I didn't say, but others may have reason.
So just very quickly, before we move on with questions, Cindy, or Ms. Steinhauser, do you want the four-part motion, like all at once?
Yes, all four items on floor ninety-two.
Yeah, we're still in questions. That's just, yes. We're gonna ask questions for a sec. All right, so Councilmember Dennis.
So some of it's after we.
Grab your mic.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, some of it's after we call the question as well. But there is a lot, there's wonderful things in this plan. You know, I'm very impressed by the parks and, but there's a lot of concerns too. So I guess my question, it's a lot to digest. And has there been any kind of public hearing for the constituents to be able to, to, you know, not just co-design, but to actually ask questions about all of these numbers? Because there's a lot of detail here that I feel over a hundred pages is tough to digest, even having been to DMC meetings and whatnot. Has there been time for questions of the community for this hundred-page document?
Madam, Council President, Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Dennis, I guess I would say that much of the public discussion around these projects has occurred under your watch, under the mechanisms that you have created around public hearings, public conversations, public meetings. And so we are really reflecting what we understand to be the, for example, Soldier Field has been given a lot of visibility, and we're still waiting for, at DMC, waiting for some clarity and direction around that. So I would say that these items have all been in the public discourse much under the city staff leadership.
Okay, but these exact numbers, like there's incredible amount of detail, many items that are under. I mean, so these numbers themselves have not been like discussed with the public after they're in writing as they are presented to us.
Well, we had public comment at the DMC meeting, public comment tonight. People have an opportunity to reflect on the posted agendas and share, not specifically a public hearing, but.
Yeah, I just, I feel such a huge project, huge multimillion. I mean, it's something that I've heard a lot of complaints from people in my ward and around Rochester of just, you know, not understanding fully and not knowing if funds are the best fit. So I just, this is a lot of information, so I was questioning.
Council President, if I could just, I'm sorry, if I could just add to that, I think it's, the life cycle of a budget process like this is that there are going to be multiple stages along the way in which refinement to the final number occurs during the design process, during your evaluation of a project and a project characteristic. So this, in a way, you can think of this as a budget that's been advanced by DMCC that would be at the outer limit of what would be expected and as a project is further defined and all of the details of the project that would make up the actual cost of the project.
Okay, Mr. Parrish?
And I would just add to that, I mean, again, these projects have many stops along the council, as Patrick's indicating, but I'd also just add, you know, the development plan update that was recently completed really sort of is tied very intricately to this budget request. And so, you know, significant public engagement around that development plan update, which obviously came on the tail of significant public engagement around the original development plan. So, I mean, they're all interrelated, but tons of engagement around the development plan update. And as you saw on your slide, you know, these are within the frameworks of investment that are contemplated within that update.
And I would just, one final thing I would say is many of them are multi-year. So they're projects that appeared last year and the year before and are, will continue to be carried forward, such as Rapid Transit, right? So lots of, it's an iterative process, lots of engagement along the way, project-specific, or as Aaron and Patrick have indicated as well, collectively, so.
Okay, question, Councilmember Ransford?
Yeah, I did have a question. It's, I mean, maybe even Mayor Norton, maybe I'll answer this, but the lack of a line item veto, is that legislative? Or is that a decision that we've made as a DMC board, or where does that come from? I'm not saying I'm gonna try to do it, I'm just curious.
Yep. Madam Chair, members of City Council, that is part of the contract between DMCC and the city. So that's the arrangement that you've agreed to with DMCC.
Okay. That always makes me a little nervous because I was coming in here like prepared to go, wait a second, Phase Two, I don't know anything about it. I'm not necessarily gonna support a hole through the gallery and mall, that kind of stuff. And so then when I saw no line item veto, I was sitting here going, oh, man. But, okay, so I understand that now and I appreciate that. I also really appreciate you mentioning that. I also really appreciate you mentioning that, you know, maybe this, some of this stuff would require some more study sessions. And so, is that something you would act?
Yes, you're getting to your question.
Would that be something you, you know, like, little bite-sized, you know, updates on Soldiers Field, or some of the more newer upcoming things? That would be wonderful if you did.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The question is, is would you be able to come in on study sessions and just do little bite-sized updates?
Madam President, and members of the council, absolutely. I think it's also really important for constituents, the community, to know that DMC does not spend any of this money. DMC only authorizes the use of this money. Only you can spend this money. So if DMC has a, this program of work must be consistent with the city council's interest in the projects. So there is, often, we talk about, it's like a safety deposit box with two keys, and DMC has one key, and the city council has the other key.
Yeah, and I wasn't talking about spending the money, I was talking about just little bite-sized.
No, absolutely, I was, I'm sorry.
All of the projects were spending the money.
Yeah, absolutely, I was just going back to private, prior comment, but absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I appreciate your educational stance this evening. Thank you. The feedback that I have had since I've been on council has been mostly negative about DMC, and I've shared this with you, Mr. Seab. And I appreciate, perhaps humility isn't the right word, but this sense of humility that's coming forward, and explanation and teaching and education to folks that might still be awake and attending the meeting to learn about this, or being able to go back, and also your little analogy of a safe deposit box with two keys. The community is still somewhat confused, or in disbelief, or just choosing not to learn more. And I think it's important with, you know, 14 to 15 years left of this legislative experiment, what it's going to end up doing. So thank you very much for this, and I appreciate you highlighting that specifically we are not voting on a 2024 budget, and you were speaking to these things here. I might say that I wish we had more feedback on Soldiers Field, and I think that maybe I wish that wasn't in this particular key takeaway, but it's here. So thank you.
Can we clarify what we approved at the DMC board?
So, Council President, members of the city council, Mayor, the DMCC board responded to the request to have Soldiers Field in the budget. But like you, I think it is waiting for clarity about what Soldiers Field would look like before it would fully authorize those. So it wants to send a signal that it has the appetite to be a significant supporter of Soldiers Field so long as it comes back with something that is compelling to the community and to this body and to DMCC. So you should understand, DMC is not driving what Soldiers Field looks like. It is only sending a signal that it is willing to be a significant supporter of that initiative.
Awesome, thank you.
Can we get a motion on the table?
Move approval of the RCA with four pieces.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Campion, can I turn it over to Mayor? Mayor Norton.
I just wanted to thank you for reiterating the heart of the city for, I think, a number of us received calls from different downtown businesses, a little overwhelmed that we might be doing yet one more construction project in their front door, given all we've put them through for the last few years with wonderful changes, but it's still a lot for them to handle. And so there's two other points I want to make. One is, from my perspective, and I'm going backward here, heart of the city meant going toward Mayo Clinic, not down the other way. So I just want to point out that this has been a change, and there are reasons for the changes, and, you know, we can go into those sometimes. But I don't want us to take that off the table forever. Maybe that's phase three, if we can have a phase three someday, because I don't think we've completed the job the way things stand now. And as I said, I understand there's reasons for that, and it's being delayed, but I just kind of want to put that out there. And the last thing, and this is more for the council, and it'll probably make Patrick a little nervous, but as part of the legislation, he's wiggling already.
Heard it before.
We have a working relationship with the DMCEDA, but ultimately, as he pointed out, the decisions that are made come through this board. That's how things become final. So people want to hate DMC, it's easy for us to just say, yeah, go ahead and hate DMC, but ultimately, it's the city council that's making all these decisions, not DMCEDA. The DMCC board has a role, it allows things to come before you. But we also don't have to only use the DMCEDA. If we decided as a city that maybe Patrick isn't heading us in a direction on a particular project, we have the right as a city council to not use the EDA. We still have to use the DMCC, however. So that, just, and I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm just letting you know that you have the authority as a city council on everything that's being done. So I think it's great that you take it seriously, but I also think we need to quit saying, people hate DMC, because it's our city. It's the decisions we make as a city council at a city. So we have to own them, and we have to make really certain that what we bring forward is quality projects. And I think we've done that, and I give, you know, Patrick and his team a lot of credit for the work they've done, despite some really bumpy times. It hasn't been smooth sailing every single day, but they've worked through it, and they do try to listen to the community and you.
And the mayor and I are also on DMC, so we make sure that our perspectives are reflected. Councilmember Palmer.
I look at it more of a misunderstanding for most people, and my job as a city council person is to market and to help provide the opportunity that we have, that we have the state of Minnesota investing in sewers and stuff that most people don't want to invest in. So that's where I see, I don't see it as a hatred, I see it as a understanding, and I need to talk to people. I also appreciate, Mr. Seab, your ability to market a little bit differently and reaching out to campaign people who are signing up, and reaching out to them and to explain to them what DMC is. I think that's a smart move on your part, and I appreciate you doing that. The other thing is, is Soldiers Field, and you and I have walked many different times, and we've made it very clear that you're just waiting for the park board to tell the city council to tell you, hey, help us here. And you have never, ever said, I want this, or DMC wants this, or you're, tell me, you know, how we can help the city, and I really do appreciate that. And I don't think people quite understand that, that you're waiting for us to come up, and you have a money investment to say, hey, we're going to help you. So I do appreciate that, and I just want you to understand that.
All right, Councilmember Dennis?
Yeah, so I reflect, Councilmember Palmer, I think it's wonderful that these projects are being made possible from funding, so it's wonderful. I just, I mean, we have to look, like, the joke about, you know, the tired enthusiasm is because for anyone who's watching, it's midnight right now, we've had a packed agenda. And I feel if, Mayor Norton, what you're saying is, you know, I believe is true, we on the council are responsible for our vote, and to understand fully what we're voting for, we need to know inside and out. And we saw at the public hearing, or the public comment this morning, people are confused. We had a resident who was confused on what he was looking at, you know, and you clarified that right now. But to get real feedback from constituents, we need to clarify and not be confused. And there's a lot of information, and I want to fully understand this, I think it's needed, I don't know if we can switch it into like a public hearing format or something, but I do, I don't believe that the time that was allotted to look at this information in this depth at this hour of the, you know, after a long meeting, is good for us to have a real vote to understand all of these numbers. So I would like to move to continue this to November 21st, to allow more feedback from the community.
Is there a second? All right, hearing done?
Call the question.
Okay, I haven't spoken yet, so I'm going to quickly. Okay, just quickly, though, so whoever hasn't spoken will have a chance. Just wanted to say, from the DMC board perspective, a couple of quick comments. So the business recruitment and retention piece, it's a small part of the budget, but it's a huge part of what could potentially really take DMC to the next level and make it incredibly successful in our community. And from the DMC board perspective, you know, we have a lot of incredible retired or former CEOs on that board of really large corporations that are deeply invested in making that strategy come to life. So it's really exciting to see the board engaged in that work. And then, just, the Soldiers Field comments have been covered, but just also the riverfront. As we think about sort of what our impact as a council can be, the riverfront is literally at the center of what I think is so exciting about our role in influencing development and changing dynamics downtown. So I think there's a lot of great work happening now in this budget and connecting Sixth Street and Soldiers Field and downtown and all of that. But the river is a transformative project, so there was a lot of enthusiasm about this sort of once-in-a-lifetime idea of starting to connect all these different pieces of property and really cool development projects. So I'm excited to see that we're starting to invest in that from the DMC perspective. All right, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, you have not spoken?
He did speak.
You did speak. Did everybody else speak? All right, well, let's go ahead and vote. Do we need a roll call?
I don't think so.
Okay. So all in favor of the motion to approve the resolution with the four components, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I abstain.
All right, motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dennis abstaining. Thank you so much for staying so late, DMC team, appreciate it. All right, we don't have any full consent items, no council-initiated actions, we have two ordinance first readings, and go ahead, Attorney Spender, I'm ready.
Madam President, starting with J1, first reading, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 4469, and replacing with new ordinance amending legal description for rezoning approximately .44 acres of land from the R1 mixed, single-family zoning district to the R2X low-density residential extra-zoning district, and amending ordinance number 2785, known as the zoning ordinance and land development manual of the City of Rochester, Minnesota. Moving on to J2, an ordinance repealing in whole ordinance number 2785, known as the land development manual, and replacing with the unified development code, repealing special district ordinances 2247, 2516, 3443, 3497, 3503, 3604, 3646, 3648, 3694, 3730, 3773, 3901, 4003, 4081, 4122, 4194, 4236, 4284, 4322, repealing all planned unit development ordinances, and repealing whole chapters 2-9, 4-7, and 6-3 of the Rochester Code of Ordnances.
Thank you for that. All right. We don't have any second readings, we don't have any tabled items, is there any other business? Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, just kind of quick, I tried to bring this up right after the public comments, and I think, I don't know if there's a better way of doing that in the future, I tried point of clarification, but maybe something. When there is misinformation being said in the public comments, I think it's our responsibility as a council to chime in and, you know, not stifle opinions, but when we've heard things about vaccines, and we've heard things about how government is run, for example, we have a weak mayor system, so everyone, not everyone, there's a few people who blame Mayor Norton for everything in the city. You know, just a basic, like, clarification, I think would be good to have after public comments, so that we, I just, I don't want to be held responsible for not stepping up if there is misinformation. So I can look at that in the future, the way to do it, but I think even just chiming in after the public's comment would be good. And then, another thing.
Just to clarify, that would take a change in our council rules.
Couldn't you, like, do a point of order, or point of information?
The meeting hasn't even been convened yet, at that point.
Correct.
Oh, so when would be the soonest we could do that in our, in our agenda? Right, like, right when we call it to order? I mean, what would be the soonest we can clarify misinformation?
We would suspend the rules, reorder the agenda.
Okay, suspend the rules, okay. Because I feel, it's not just, I mean, definitely council, but staff, too. There's a lot of expertise in the city, and I feel it's our moral obligation as, you know, not to allow misinformation to be not checked. And then my other, another, just comment about, I know I've mentioned breaks before, but I feel long meetings like this, when, a lot of us take breaks at different times, I know we want it for efficiency, we want to move this long, but a five-minute break here or there makes it so that no one misses information. Like, for example, I took a break during, I had to get up and check on my three kids who were tucking themselves in, and I missed some of the public comments. And then I saw Councilmember Bransford leave, and President Carlson leave while information was being given, and we miss information that could be pivotal for an informed vote. So I just, I think we should reevaluate, or not just reevaluate, just be more supportive of breaks in the future. Thank you.
Move adjourned.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Here is, we are adjourned.